All right. Good evening, everyone. This is December 2nd, Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. And this is the Clarkston City Council meeting. And I will start with roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Carroll. Councilwoman Bill.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Adie.
Present.
And recognize our city manager, Shakia Miller Thornton. With the, at this time, we'll need to make two adjustments to the agenda, starting with, I think, one is to include the business of the month. Oh, no, no business of the month. Okay. What about the other one?
Eight A.
I have, um, I have a motion.
Yes.
To move, um, old business six K to six A. Oh, it's new business. Sorry.
Okay, six K to six eight A. Is there a second to move?
Let me say it over.
Yes.
I would like to move eight K to eight A.
And that is to consider resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, pawn and company for the rewrite of the city's comprehensive planning amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be funded out of the general fund budget. And there was a se, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, it was properly moved and seconded to move item eight K to eight A. Is any discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. And we will now move into the presentation of the CARES grants awards. And that will be Mill, Mill, Miller Thornton, City Manager Miller Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, CARES, Clarkston CARES Community Assistance Resources Empowerment and Support Grant is an initiative aimed at providing funding to nonprofit organizations that directly serve Clarkston residents. For this round, we have four awards that will be granted tonight in the amount of ten thousand dollars each. And the first award goes to Omega Support Center. Hi.
Hey. Come on. Yeah.
So, um, Omega Support Center Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization established in 2016 and headquartered in DeKalb County. Their organization serves as a vital community hub dedicated to reducing food insecurity, supporting senior citizens, empowering youth, and stabilizing families through access to resources and supportive services. Omega's core programs include monthly food distributions, community dinners, youth and senior outreach, and basic resource needs. The Nourish and Thrive Senior Wellness and Nutrition Initiative is a monthly program operating year-round, serving adults aged fifty-five and older within Clarkston city limits. There will be monthly food distributions, cooking and nutrition workshops, community dinners, and gift baskets containing food and gift cards for food procurement. Thank you. Um, second, we have Catholic Charities Atlanta, CCA. Um, are they in the room tonight? Okay. Um, this grant will be used to provide rental assistance funds to Clarkston residents already enrolled in their programs. And they anticipate that these rental assistance funds would, would keep six to eight Clarkston household stable, in stable housing. The third award goes to Center for Victims of Torture, Georgia. Are they in the, thank you, sir. They support refugee and immigrant communities living in the city of Clarkston through offering mental health and rehabilitation services. Their rehabilitation services offer integrated psychotherapy and case management services as well as community work. Service one is case management. CBT providers assist clients in assessing various community resources, including social services such as food, clothing, housing, transportation. Service two, psychotherapy, CBT, psychotherapists use a range of evidence-based practices to reduce post-trauma symptoms in clients. And service three, community work, CBT Georgia conducts, conducts community work to increase the understanding that torture and trauma does not only impact an individual, rather it impacts the entire community. Thank you. And the last award goes to Inspirisus. Yes. Formerly Lutheran Services of Georgia, is a nonprofit organization located in Clarkston, Georgia, founded in nineteen eighty-one and incorporated in nineteen eighty-three. Inspirisus has spent over four decades serving the, the local community. Each year, they provide humans, human services programming, including youth services, case management, employment, and entrepreneurship coaching, legal services, and more. Inspirisus will distribute food assistance to two hundred-plus Clarkston residents experiencing, um, experiencing food insecurity during regular walk-in hours at their Clarkston location. Thank you. And we do have, um.
Go ahead.
We do have the large checks to present tonight.
Okay.
And we would like to get photo opportunities.
Okay, absolutely. Um, and then what we can do is, let's go ahead and do the employee. And then we can just all stay at one time and go down.
Okay, awesome. Um, the employee of the month. Oh. You're calling it first?
You call it. You, I want you to do it.
Okay, thank you. The, this employee is recognized for outstanding job performance and unwavering positive attitude and exemplary teamwork. They consistently approach every task with a smile, remain calm under pressure, and set a strong example for colleagues across the organization. Their dedication to maintaining and beautifying the city, commitment to public service, and resourceful, resourceful problem-solving skills make them an invaluable member of Team Clarkston. With no complaints and a solid reputation for reliability, this employee continues to embody the city's values of service, excellence, and community pride. The employee of the month for November twenty twenty-five is Jonathan English, Facilities Manager, Public Works Department.
And Mark, on behalf of Mr. English, Mr. Seaton will accept the award?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So at this time, councilor, if you, if we would step down so we can do the group shots.
Maybe one other person move over that way. One second, I'm gonna grab, I'm gonna grab my phone.
You guys look, you could sing while we're waiting.
You know what you're asking for, Debbie. You know what you're asking for, Debbie. If you're what you wish for.
Jamie's quite the singer.
Can you move in just a little bit? Yes, first. Okay, perfect. Thank you. No, we're, we're good with the makeup.
The Jonathan.
Thank you so much. Did you want, don't you judge them, David, too?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, Catherine.
Catherine Cherry.
Do that selfie. Okay.
And, and they'll be back on Monday.
Okay, okay.
They'll be back on Monday. Catherine Cherry. I know they were coming, they may have run into traffic. Center for Victims of Torture. And Inspirisus. Thank you.
Picture him, they wanna hold up.
Oh, yeah, you. Yeah, you did.
Well, we want to say thank you again to our CARES award grantees for not only the work that you've been doing for our community, but what you'll be able to do and continue to do with this allotment that you've received from the city. We appreciate everyone who applied, um, and we truly look forward to the continued partnership that we have with these individuals. And again, thank you to Joseph Jonathan for his continued work for the city. We appreciate all that all of our employees do. We'll move on to see which is to approve the following meeting minutes, and that would be November sixth, twenty twenty-five, uh, city council meeting, and November sixth, twenty twenty-five called city council and downtown development authority meeting, and November fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, city councils, special city council, special call city council meeting, and November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, city council work session. And I'm hoping that we have our two council members who will no longer be here after this year to do these types of motions, so they can have their last hurrah. How about that?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes for November sixth, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, called city, city council and downtown development authority meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, special called city council meeting, and number, uh, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, city council work session.
A second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that we approve the following minute meetings of November sixth, twenty twenty-five, city council, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, called city council, um, downtown development authority meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, special called city council meeting, and November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, city council work session. Is there any question or any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, and we'll move into reports, starting with our city manager's report.
I'll start with, um, project. Project initiatives, um, from the city manager's office. Um, I participated in the following as related to current and our upcoming project and plans initiatives. Of course, I served on the RFP review committee for the city's annexation study and comprehensive plan rewrites. We have those contracts on the agenda for council approval on tonight. Um, I participate in bi-weekly project management team meetings for phase one of the city's Safe Streets for All, um, project, and phase one of the city's Greenway Trail project. Um, I've participated in project and software demo and review meetings for financial management software, and we continue to conduct bi-weekly executive leadership team meetings, um, as we work to develop a culture change management plan. This plan is going to involve assessing the current culture, defining the desired culture, and creating a strategy for a transition into, um, the culture that we desire. Currently, we are focused on developing a strong leadership commitment and clear vision with statements that define the goals of the plan. The next steps will be to engage and to empower our staff to join in, um, continued development of the plan, and to also be active participants in the change initiative. The administration is currently finalizing implementation components of the personnel policy rewrite. Such components include leave time audits and excess accrual considerations, remote access considerations, and ID badge program implementation, just, just to name a few. Um, meetings participated in November of, um, twenty twenty-five, um, I participated in the Georgia Municipal Association's Federal Policy Council meeting. As a member of that council, um, I engaged with other city representatives regarding federal regulations relative to infrastructure funding. Some of those topics included surface transportation needs, suggest, suggestions on streamlining federal requirements for funding applications, um, looking at formula changes, um, that are, instead of being, um, population-based, considering, um, utili, utilization and use, um, formulas and other funding scenarios, and working to make sure that there is legislation, um, passed on the federal level that gives direct funding to cities much like, um, our, our ARPA fundings were. On November eighteenth, I met with the city's treasury services, services providers to conduct account review meetings. Um, we have implemented positive pay account services to ensure additional protection of city funds. On November twenty-fifth, I participated in the local infrastructure hub webinar. Um, some of those topics included, um, driving progress in infrastructure projects, um, how cities can best access and leverage competitive infra, infrastructure funding, um, what's next in infrastructure funding. Um, I think it important to note that, um, some of the components of the last infrastructure bill, which was the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, um, included things like environmental justice and social equity goals. Um, at present, we're not sure if the current administration is going to continue in those priorities, which is, which makes that decision important for cities like the city of Clarkston. Um, anytime you, uh, don't include social equity and justice in, in these type of funding decisions, um, you risk hindrances in economic or social mobility, which are, you know, those are components that have become a priority within the city of Clarkston. So we are watching the infrastructure bill closely to ensure that, um, we advocate for policy that continues to help us to advance both economically, um, in our transportation initiatives, and our job opportunity and access initiatives as well. Um, events on November eighth, of course, I, I, um, attended the Clarkston Community Center's one hundred year celebration. On the seventeenth, we hosted the city, the city's Veterans Day brunch and serviced, um, eighteen of our local veterans with a meal that they thoroughly enjoyed. On November twenty-second, um, I attended the food distribution drive that morning, and then that afternoon, I was honored, um, to be the speaker for the Amani Women's Centers' Sewing Academy graduation, where they graduated thirty women, um, from their sewing program, who were either graduates or, um, participants in their master's program. Some of our upcoming events are Friday, November fifth, we have the Winter Wonderland, um, from six to eight at the Women's Club, and December twelfth is the employee recognition event. Um, we do have two new hires within the organization. We have a new court clerk, which makes the court, um, Services Division fully staff, Ms. Jimenez, and then we just recently brought on our Economic Mobility Specialist, um, McKinley, who started on yesterday. Um, and of course, that was through the three hundred and forty-five thousand grant from the, um, dollar grant from ICMA and Bill Gates Foundation. Um, within the report, that's fifteen pages of report, so and all of our, um, departments are highlighted in that report. I won't take up all of our time and read off, um, everything that's happening. But I do want to highlight a special thank you to our Public Works Department for, um, the cleanup event that, that happened, um, this past, well, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um, and of course, we have a lot of different initiatives being handled within our other departments as well. So if you have any questions about what's going on, I will highlight too that we have the new, um, elected, newly elected officials orientation this week on December fourth at ten PM, I mean, ten AM, ten AM. Um, and, um, we are also gearing up to hold, uh, first fa, first phase of our interviews for the ch, chief of police position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We will move to our city attorney, looks a little different.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Burks. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay, thank you for coming in this evening. So we'll move to council remarks, and starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's safe to say, I did most of what the city, um, manager did this month, but I'll recap. I'm sorry. Just a little bit, a lot less, actually. Um, on November, well, actually, we went to the Veterans Day Recognition Brunch. That was amazing. We met a new, um, veteran here in the city, and she actually volunteered at the food drive the weekend after that, so that was very, very good. And on the twentieth, um, I attended the employee appreciation Thanksgiving luncheon. Um, I don't know if it's safe to say, but thank you Larry Kaiser for every year, um, recognizing the service that these employees perform here in the city is well appreciated. And on the twenty-second, we had a food drive. It was amazing. Um, but that was, um, almost our last food, mobile food distribution with the help of the city manager and, um, the council. We would like to do something a little closer to home, so we'll, we'll bring the food to the community. So we're, we're working on that, um, for January. But the last food drive is December, the last mobile food drive is December twentieth at the Tahoe Plaza. And we also attended the gala for, um, the one-hundredth anniversary of the Clarkston Community Center. It was really good seeing some of the things that have came out of that community center and where they're trying to go. So, um, that, well, and then I would like for everyone to acknowledge one of our older members of the community, Mr. Roberts' birthday. Mr. Robert Winfrey's birthday is today.
My favorite cherry. Happy birthday.
All right.
All right. Blessing.
And our mayor celebrated her birthday on Sunday.
Yeah, I did.
And this is the aftermath, but that, that, and, and Jamie and Susan Hood, it has been a pleasure, um, working with both of you, and I hope neither one of you are moving. So we will see you come. You're gonna move to the other side? Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And to the elder on the council. To the person who has been, uh, a joy to be around, and I appreciate him, and I appreciate his tenacity. So we're gonna move forward with him doing his presentation in terms of Councilman Jamie Carroll, 'cause he has special guests in the audience, I see that. Um, and so we are very proud of your father. So just wanted to make sure we said that. So thank you for sharing your father with us these years. So we appreciate that, okay? Take it away.
Um, hey, so as you know, I didn't run for reelection November. Uh, this is my last council personal remarks, at least for a while. Uh, the Bible says for everything, uh, there is a season. Uh, I've been in the council, uh, for almost nine years. Um, so this season is, is ending. Um, sorry, I promised I wouldn't do this. Uh, so Nancy Pelosi said that politics is a team sport, uh, as usual, she's proud of you. Uh, so I want to thank all the councilmembers and city staff I've worked with. Uh, you've all contributed to the city in your own ways. I want to thank all the city managers I've worked with, Keith Barker, Robin Gomez, Shawna Quee, Dan Dethan, Tammy Saddle Jones, Shakia Miller Thornton. Uh, they've all contributed to the city in a lot of different ways. I want to thank all the mayors I've worked with, Ted Terry, Wettiasuas, inner mayor, and Beverly Burks. Also want to thank all the councilmembers that served with me. Uh, they're too numerous to list, even at my speed, so you know who you are. And so, uh, because politics is a team sport, you know, there's no accomplishment that has a single person, the blame or the failure that's a single person blame. Uh, still, I'm proud of some things I did accomplish while I was in the council. Uh, the tiny home ordinance, it's the first tiny home in Georgia. A lot, a lot of cities have copied that ordinance, there are a lot more tiny homes now than there were, um, when I passed this eight years ago. Uh, ADU ordinance, uh, before I was in the council, you weren't allowed to have a home in your backyard. So you couldn't build a home in your backyard. That's, it's now legal, a lot of people have done that in Clarkston, I think it's been a good improvement. Uh, completing the path along Roland Street. Uh, so when I was in council, there was a gap in the path. Uh, didn't, it ended at Church, where Roland, where Church Street happens, and it didn't start again until aft, until you get behind Clarkston First Baptist. And so that gap has been closed, so I think that's been a big accomplishment. A lot of people have been using the path. Uh, Clarkston, uh, still having a police force, and that's kind of controversial topic, but at one point, believe it or not, that was in question, whether or not Clarkston would still have a police force. That's no longer in question. Um, so we do have a fully staffed police force. Uh, the Clarkston market, uh, if you believe it, that was a three-three vote the mayor had to break the tie of. So we were this close to not having the Clarkston market, um, which has just been written up, and a lot of reports, it's been a huge success, so I think that that's something to be proud of. Uh, there's been nearly five hundred, uh, new housing units built while I was in the council. Uh, the towns at Clarkston, again, that was a three-two vote. Uh, that almo, that, that downtown almost did not pass. Uh, the, the Clarkston Senior Center, the townhomes at Glendale, Peachtree and Ponce, the townhomes, so I think that we have a lot to be proud of there. There's been a lot of new sidewalks added since I was on the council, and there's been the streetscapes, there's been on Market Street. Uh, there's still work to go, you know. Uh, there's still some items in agenda that I hope you guys can honor me by voting for tonight. If you don't, I won't take it personally, but I, I, I think there's still improvements we can make. So I guess my challenge, um, to the public and councilmembers, so think about where you can add value to the city. So if, if you're on the council, I mean, pretty much anyone can just vote for the contracts that city manager and the staff brings us. I mean, that's not really adding value, 'cause those are gonna pass anyways, I think we all know that. Pretty much anyone can improve the general budget that's presented to us. You know, that's something that pretty much has to be funded, police, Public Works, et cetera. But, so, and then pretty much anyone can just vote down items, if there are some loud voices to complain about them and vote for things, if there are some loud voices to advocate for it, you know, again, that's something you can, you can always do, and to be honest, you can be re-elected in the council for pretty much as long as you want, as long as you go along, get along, you know, don't upset people, vote with the people when there, when there's loud voices, vote against things when there's loud voices against it. So, but the, the way you need to think about is where can you add value to the city? Where can you push agenda items that would not have passed if you weren't there? Where can you make improvements to things that would have been improved if you weren't there? So I hope everyone can work on that. Uh, so, sorry, promise I'll stop after this. But, uh, so Lincoln said, um. It's in my throat. We, we all need to form a more, a more perfect union, and hopefully we can all work on that. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you so much, Councilman Carroll. Um, with that, uh, we'll have our next. With that, we'll have our next person, Councilwoman Hood.
Thank you.
Give me three minutes.
Was that over three minutes?
No, no.
Keep it at three.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure to serve the city that I love and the residents of this city. I'm gonna date myself now and quote Jack Kennedy, because he was a big part of my youth when he said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." And that has always motivated me. That's why I spent most of my working career working in local government. That's why I was so active in this community before I was, ran for office. And I hope that everybody can keep that in mind. There's a lot that can be done on either side of the dais. And by the way, I'll just be moving chairs, so I'll be going back over there. But anyway, public service to me is a high calling. And I've been very lucky to work with exceptional people sitting up here alongside me and with wonderful professionals. And the staff, we try to call them out for their good works, but they put in so many hours and they solve so many problems before anybody ever knows what, that's out there. So Clarkston has excellent, dedicated people, and I just thank all of them, city manager, city clerk, everyone sitting in the audience here and those who are not here. And of course, our city attorney, Stephen Quinn, if you'll pass along my good wishes to him. So thank you very much for those of you who have supported me, those of you who have educated me, and I look forward to continuing to be an active member in the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hood. So we'll move to Councilwoman Bell.
Well, thank you. So that's a hard act to follow, right? So I'm honored, it's an honor and pleasure each day to serve on this board with y'all, especially Susan, who always gives me a different perspective, so I'm gonna miss you. And Jamie, you know, we started as the first millennial-led council in this country. And both started, me starting at 26, you were a guiding light for a lot of things that I've done. So I'm really gonna miss you, but I'm gonna see Leah and the babies and you all the time, I'm sure, around. I don't get emotional, but Jamie, I never, now I'm getting emotional. All right, so, under things that I have done in the month of November, I got reelected. So this will be my third and final term. Can be very clear, it's 20 years when I wrap up this last term. So all things in, and they must conclude at some point. But I am very grateful for the city and all the residents that believed in my vision and believed in me to elect me one more time to finish the work that I started. This month and in the month of November, I celebrated the Clarkston Community Center's 100 years. And I also did the Clarkston Cleanup with Public Works, which was fun. Richard was dragging around a front end of somebody's car throughout the park, we was cleaning it up. I am in the sixth cohort of emplers, which means out of many, there's one. They picked 10 local elected officials from across the South and seven states. And I was one of the ones they picked, and our charge is to address a disparity in our communities. And mine has spoken on economic viability and mobility. So they'll give us resources for that, and I look forward to working with each and one of y'all in order to enact that project here in the city of Clarkston. In addition to that, I was also selected as an outstanding Atlanta honorary. Only 10 young individuals are selected out of thousands that apply. In some kind of way, they picked me to be one of those 10, to recognize my leadership, my service and my achievement throughout the city of Atlanta. And I look forward to cultivating the group project and now serving on the board here soon. So those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a lot of repeats as well in terms of events, but I did want to say thank you to Councilwoman Hood just for four years of service. I think there's a lot that goes into being in this role. It is very easy to sit and just show up to meetings, but if you do the job right, there's a lot of review that happens before meetings. Our agenda packet for this meeting was over 500 pages long. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, just, you know, that's not just sitting up in the spotlight. And so thanks for putting that work in, for bringing your perspective and experience into our conversations as well. That's greatly appreciated. And Councilman Carroll, I'm gonna try not to get emotional too as well for both y'all. It's like I was holding it in for number one, and we'll see if I can make it. But I appreciate just the perspective. I think it takes a village to lead a village, if I can make up any saying. And I think the number of perspectives that we have coming on the council, and the variety of those perspectives, and the willingness to consider different ideas, to present new ideas, is absolutely critical to good decision-making. And so I just appreciate the way that you have brought that into the conversations around council, willingness to reconsider things, to come up with creative solutions. And so your voice will definitely be missed as well. So the things that I did, you know, the last month, I attended Ethne Health, one of our local medical clinics that we have that provides affordable healthcare to people. Their seven-year birthday party, so I've been here seven years, time flies. I remember when they first met with them when they first came to Clarkston and were kind of working on a sliding scale clinic idea. And so it's amazing to see kind of what's continued to grown out of that. They're opening up a low-cost pharmacy, I believe, here before the end of the year. It's gonna provide lower-cost medication to our residents. And especially with everything getting more expensive, it's a huge benefit to the community. Also, November 8th, I attended the Clarkston Community Center's anniversary celebration. So thank you to them for just the work they put into that. It was a good time. And also thank you to the staff. I took my kids out to the Clarkston Cleanup Event. We did not drag any car parts around, though we had to tell them not to. It was like, no, please don't go under that bridge. But they really enjoyed it. So thank you to Marcus and to our Public Works staff for the work they all put into organizing that, getting everybody together. I think it was a really great start to hopefully something that continues on for years to come. Oh, and Martha, almost forgot Martha. Sorry, well, see, I forgot Martha, because she told me to give the staff credit, and I got my hands slapped. So no, Martha's been a huge advocate for our parks, for keeping the community beautiful. She's put a ton of work in, more than just picking up trash, but advocating for the preservation of nature in spaces where we can retreat in the community. So she has done a ton of public-facing work, but probably way more behind-the-scenes work, keeping things moving and bringing people together for that. So thank you to her. I'll briefly hit the others. Went to the Bed and Stay Breakfast, so thank you again to our community, to those of you who served, our country's armed forces. It was great to be there and just connect with folks, have conversations, hear stories, and provide, talk about ways that the city can better support you all. And then finally attended Chief Hudson's retirement celebration. So thank you again to a police chief, just for her many years of service, and best of luck to her and whatever comes next. Hopefully lots of relaxation. And lastly, on November 22nd, I attended the food distribution at Tahoe Village. And that is it.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Ade, I think you have to use, yeah, there we go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. November 8th, I attended the 100th year ceremony at the Clarkston Community Center. And it was a great event where a lot of people came together and remembered the previous things and how it was and the forecast for the next 20 years, 100 years, the next 100 years. And November 21st, I attended Chief of Police Retirement Event. A lot of the city employees and staff all met there, and it was like sweet and sour to see her leaving after such a long time. Anyway, that was the way it was. So we said goodbye to her. And the same day in the afternoon, because on the 22nd, we had a food drive. However, the day before the food drive, I hand-delivered to the seniors in Clarkston. So that afternoon, I hand-delivered the food boxes to the seniors. And on the 27th, 22nd in the morning, so I also volunteered at the food drive. And 22nd afternoon, I attended a Man and Women's Center graduation ceremony. Thank you.
Okay. And for my report, first I want to say, and I'm trying not to get emotional, because Councilman Carroll, we were on planning and zoning together. So I have appreciated all the time, not only that you devoted from planning and zoning, but on council and within the community. And one of the most important things that I respect about you is that you will, whether it's five to whatever, if that is what you believe in, then you stand by that. And so that commitment in terms of how you feel about issues and making sure in terms of those issues that are important to you, you've been a very big advocate of that. And so thank you for coming up with ideas and, you know, making sure in terms of thinking of different ways for us to look at our city. So I want to tell you thank you for that and hoping that you will enjoy your time. I will see you running down on Market Street, so grateful for that. Thank you so much. And Councilwoman Hood, well, Councilwoman Hood, and it has been a joy. We have been up and down these roads. And so I appreciate your thoroughness, your attention to detail, your attention to ensuring that we're good stewards of the land and as well as the money that we are responsible for. And for also taking a council vacation, that's our little inside joke. But thank you again for all that you do and will continue to do. And even from being on the charter review before you even became a councilmember. It starts with you in this room. Just like Jamie and Susan, they saw a need, they took on a need, and they made sure to support this community. And so by you even coming to this council meeting, thank you for that, because that is how we as a community will grow. That's how we will learn. And thanks to both of you for your support throughout the year, so thank you so much. I want to make sure in terms of my activities, it's kind of the same thing, which is a good thing. And I'm grateful to the council for your active participation. So, you know, that is a wonderful thing for our residents to be able to see you out in the community, serving the community. So one of the good things I got to do is one of our former residents, he lives around the area. His name is Prem Berninha. He's a journalist from Nepali. And so he actually did a documentary called Zero to 8848, and that was his attempt to climb Mount Everest. And so he actually only got to like 5,000 feet, I'm sorry, I'm giving the plot out. But he was able to have his flag, and one of his team members actually went all the way to the top of Mount Everest to kind of highlight the beauty of Nepal and everything else. So I thought that was a wonderful documentary that he was able to do and to show his transitions back and forth between here, Atlanta, Clarkston, and over there. It was a wonderful documentary. I attended the 100th Anniversary Celebration for the Community Center. I also attended the Eritrean Community Day, which is always a great opportunity. I attended the DeKalb Municipal Association's annual meeting where I was reappointed or reelected to being the Policy Chair for the DMA. I attended the Litter Day. I also attended the Veterans Day, and after that, I attended the Police Chief's Food Distribution, and I saw Assistant Todd out there providing the food, so he was holding it down for Clarkston. So thank you for that. I attended our food drive as well as a Man and Women's Center. And then I also attended a meet and greet with the interim CEO from MARTA, Jonathan Hunt. And so he allowed us to know what his plans were from now until they have a new CEO, but also in preparation for the World Cup. So, you know, they're making a lot of changes to be prepared for those 30-plus days of World Cup, and making sure that people can use mass transit to be able to get to and from the games. So that was kind of my short little schedule there. So with that, we'll move to public comments, and any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comments. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it's not a time for dialogue. If your public comments contain a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for a public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner at this time. Mitch, Clerk Mitchell, who do we have?
Kathy Boras.
I wanted to be available to address.
Well, you can make your comment, because, um... Okay. Should I have to do it now? Yeah, okay. Just go ahead, come on and make your, yeah, come on.
I just wanted to be able to, firstly, I wanted to thank Robert, who's been working ceaselessly and tirelessly for many, many years in the trenches, behind the scenes, keeping the lake going single-handedly, and been a treasurer on Clarkston Shores Corporation. I want to just express our gratitude and appreciation. And I want to say I'm very excited about the opportunity that Jamie and a variety of councilpeople are showing support, and city manager, mayor, we're very grateful. It's a really rare opportunity that we have now a Parks and Recreation Department that is headed up by a wonderful leader, and that we're exploring creative ways to support the lake and allow the lake to be available to the citizens and help sustain the lake into the future, which is way outside of our scope as private citizens. So I want to express gratitude and also to DeKalb County, Ted Terry, for stepping up. So we really appreciate it, and we're really looking forward to the potential for progressive and innovative and expansive ways to beautify and sustain the lake and make it available to the citizens of Clarkston. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
My name is Tim Hall. I live at 3525 Bacon Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm appalled at the zoning ordinance changes, because they will make my residential NR3 neighborhood too dense and less safe for all residents and pedestrians. I'd like to make four points, and I'd like to straighten out some false assumptions that are being used to justify changing the zoning ordinance to prevent overly dense townhomes in my neighborhood. Point number one, these townhomes will prevent or significantly reduce the need to raise our taxes to cover the shortfall in this year's budget. This is simply not true. The fact is, if we build four to six new infill townhomes as protected by Councilmember Carroll, we will raise approximately $12,000 in tax revenue for Clarkston, which is approximately 2% of this year's projected budget deficit. At that rate, it would take 50 years of building these infill townhomes to cover the $600,000 budget deficit. Building townhomes will not prevent a tax increase or have any meaningful impact on our budget situation for a long time, if ever. Point number two, more affordable housing will be created if these townhomes are built in NR3 neighborhoods. This is simply false, because the townhomes will likely at least, likely cost at least $300,000 to build and could sell for at least $400,000 or more. Mr. Carroll's tax assumption referenced above assumes a selling price of approximately $400,000. This point is unaffordable for many of Clarkston's existing residents. Ironically, these townhomes may displace existing more affordable... these townhomes may displace existing more affordable, single-family housing options that exist in our NR3 neighborhood today. Instead of providing more affordable housing options, it is likely that these changes will bring teardowns or lot assemblages, removing existing less expensive and more affordable housing units. Point number three, according to Mr. Carroll, this is an urgent problem. It needs immediate attention. There are no developers with projects queued up in Clarkston to build townhomes. None. The only urgency here is for Councilmember Carroll to bring this matter to a vote before he leaves office next month. These proposed changes to our zoning ordinance represent a longstanding personal agenda for Councilmember Carroll to overly densify our NR3 neighborhoods. Point number four, the residents of NR3 have not reached any compromise or consensus with Councilmember Carroll on this issue. Anyone who says we have is simply not telling the truth. But NR3 neighbors did try and successfully to compromise. I propose at least three councilmembers and the mayor to note on all five of the proposed zoning ordinance changes, as they all relate to overly dense townhomes. Let's do this the right way, by completing the comprehensive plan next year. And once that is in place, we can be about making the changes to the zoning ordinance that are needed to bring our zoning ordinance in alignment with our comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. With four seconds to spare, and who do we have next?
Joshua Deaton.
Hey, friends. Good to see you all. I'm here to speak just very briefly in support of the zoning amendments that you guys just heard about. It's been a little while since I've been in, haven't even been in this room. But the conversations have been the same for a very long time, probably 10 years at least, even before I was in Clarkston. These amendments are not huge changes. And I'm not an expert. I've read way too much than I care to admit on all this, but I'm not an expert. However, the city has paid experts multiple times for this. And then, like you said, there has been no compromise. They say, they get a lot of community input. They say, here's what the community says. And then the council has voted it down. Here's another just baby step to moving a little bit closer to what the community has said over and over again. We'd love to have more affordability, more density, and basically just have our zoning in line with what research says we need. And so I just encourage you to think through that research. Think through all the thousands, thousands, and thousands of dollars the city has spent, and how can we move forward? Just another baby step, because I think this is what the amendments would do. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else did we have next?
Debbie Gathman.
Okay, I have, sorry. I have, I'm Debbie Gathman. Wow. Mel Avenue. I did bring it in writing, because I wasn't sure I'd get the 33 minutes in. First, I am grateful for the communications we are receiving from the city regarding special events. It's made a difference to me and my neighbors knowing what's going on. Now, I want to see communication increase a little to send out a broadcast email of the meetings that are on the schedule for the following two weeks, because I noticed at the planning and zoning meeting that we had, I had missed two meetings that I wanted to go to, that were not on the calendar and were never discussed in advance. And I feel strongly about this. I love the city. I want to come to these things and find out what the hell's going on. So that's important to me. This could come out every Friday and keep the citizens aware of the important meetings that affect our city. Tucker and Avondale have been doing this for 10 years. Many times, I find out about a meeting from Decaturish, and we can do better than that. So a simple list of which committee meetings are happening, when they're happening, and where, two weeks out, so people can arrange their schedules to attend. Number two, I want a report from the police, along with the other reports that happen at city council meetings. We've had a few serious incidents this year. There's a lot of gossip on Nextdoor that scares the heck out of everybody. I think it would ease our feelings to have a report from the police, like we used to. After Ted started, we stopped having that, and I want that. We did this up until Ted's reign, and I want us to return to letting the citizens know about crime and how it's being resolved. Third, under H of the zoning changes, we were told at the zoning meeting that all of the changes did not include NR1, but you have NR1 on the page. I see it's listed on the agenda, and I'm going to want clarification. Fourth, I am thrilled to see that you, we are requesting a noise barrier at 285. I've been calling and writing the DOT for years. It is very, very loud late into the evening for us near 285. We need a noise barrier and trees planted behind it to muffle the noise, the car noise. Apparently, there are no longer any laws enforced regarding glass pack mufflers and loud engines and motorcycles, and that noise from the highway is really crazy. It's almost the equivalent to me leaving the TV on loud every night until 3:00 in the morning. Last night until 4:00 in the morning, because people are going home. I'm done. And I have a copy for each of you, because I wasn't sure how that was going to go, because you always like to get them in writing. So I got a copy for you. Not for you, because you're leaving.
Debbie, I'm still going to be here, Debbie.
Debbie, did you miss one?
Oh, did I miss you?
I've got two more years.
Okay. No, I got mine. I got mine.
We're going to have to split the babies, Susan, to tear it in half.
Okay, tear it in half. All right. Who else do we have?
I didn't even mention Jamie in the round.
Oh, wow. Some restraint.
Okay. Okay, I'm glad I got the mask. Who else? Did anyone else in the audience want to, I want to make sure to give everybody a chance, come on up, if you want to have your moment. Thank you. Because I know sometimes with traffic, it may be hard for you to get here to do it.
I didn't see, I didn't actually see where to sign up.
That's okay.
So first of all, I wanted, I'm Simone Wilson, 1060 Jolly Avenue. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do. Jamie, thank you. Susan, thank you. I feel like I'm friends with both of you guys, as well as you guys are representing me, and I appreciate everything that you've done. That said, I also appreciate that you guys have, as far as the zoning, the rezoning, or the zoning changes, rather, that you have tried to work with us. As Tim said, I don't feel like that we came to any agreements on that. And so I hope that there's not going to be a vote on this tonight, or if there is, it's not going to be what I think it's going to be. I just feel like it's still being pushed on us. And I think that a lot of the people in NR3 in my neighborhood feel that way. I mean, last year, we got over 50 signatures, and yet you guys voted to push through this, this thing that nobody in the neighborhood wanted. And here we are again. Yes, you've made some changes, but we also have a comprehensive plan for next year. And I've said this before in other meetings, it feels like we're horse before the cart. I know that we've had, we've paid people, you know, to help us with some of our planning. Some of that was good, and some of it wasn't. But the truth is, a lot of people aren't ready for a bunch of townhomes crammed on lots. And once it's done, it's done. And I just, it feels too soon. And I know that you've been working on this, and other people have been working on this for a while. But for us that live in the neighborhoods that will be affected, it feels like it's just a constant thing in the back of our brains that we're always worried about. It doesn't feel like the right fit for the neighborhood, plain and simple. So that's what I'm going to say about that. The other thing, completely unrelated, but it's been, I've been meaning to send an email to everybody. Because of everything going on in our country with ICE coming into communities, I am just on pins and needles all the time, worried that we're going to see that happen in our community with, that represents so many different ethnicities. And I just am concerned. And so my question is, what's, what would happen if they show up? And maybe they have, and I don't know. And if there's meetings that are happening, I'd like to be a part of it. I just don't, I haven't heard of that. So I'm wondering what we're going to do to protect our people, our neighbors, and will the police support the community members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
And anybody else would like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else online? Anyone else hearing none? Public comments are closed at this time. So we will move to old business, starting with 6A, and that's to consider a resolution requesting the Georgia General Assembly to adjust the Clarkston municipal boundaries to facilitate the delivery of municipal service. And we'll have Councilman Perkins to address that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you all know, we've talked about this a number, for a number of months this year. So let me get back to my, from my public comment notes, to my notes here. So I want to share, I've had a number of questions come up with it, just asking for clarification. And so again, this, what we are doing is we are asking the General Assembly to go in and correct, basically adjust, the property lines to encapsulate the entire parcel for a number of properties within Clarkston. The thing that kicked us off is back, actually, last year, we had two of our community members come to us because they showed up to vote in Clarkston elections, which they had previously, and were told that they actually were ineligible to vote in Clarkston because they were not living in the city. The way that the Board of Elections and pretty much the state works when it comes down to voter registration and eligibility is they look at where your actual house is on your property. So if your property is inside the municipal boundary, you get to vote in municipal elections, in whatever district you're part of. If it's outside of the municipal boundary, you're not. So I want to show, James, if you can pull up, just to illustrate this, a couple of people have asked to, just to be able to see an illustration of this. These are two of the properties that are, I think, illustrate sort of the two different scenarios. We have really a couple of different scenarios here. I think, I think, for the most part, you can categorize them into two categories. So one is properties that are, the home itself is inside Clarkston's boundary, which you'll see by the darker shaded area on this map. So this is 1127 and 1129 Cleve Mark Drive. And if you notice, the line that cuts through the property itself, that's the county-city boundary. So this property is paying 100% of its taxes to Clarkston, but part of the property is technically not within city limits. So this, I've talked to the Secretary of State's office and others, this is not something that is supposed to happen. But obviously, somewhere down the line, it did. And I've asked, I've checked to see if there's an administrative fix to this. I was told that because technically, this is an annexation, even though it kind of falls between the definitions of it, because they're paying 100% Clarkston taxes, we would have to follow an annexation method to get it pulled completely into the city. We can't just call DeKalb GIS and say, hey, can you adjust the map, because people are already paying taxes. So in this case, it's more of a cleanup situation. These people are eligible to vote, because if you notice the darker box at the top, that's the actual home. But part of the property is still in unincorporated DeKalb. It just makes sure there's no future issues coming down the line. And if you see, 1129 is the little, you know, irregular-shaped square directly underneath the larger parcel with the home, while 98, or 99% of that parcel is within Clarkston. You can't quite see it on the slide. If you zoom in, there is like a, probably a four-foot square sliver that is in unincorporated DeKalb. So is it super consequential? You know, it's not. I don't believe somebody's going to put a tent there and try to vote. However, it is something where it's not completely within the city, presenting DeKalb with an authoritative master lips, or master list, just makes it a lot easier for their departments to go through the, you know, the different, basically check the different boxes they need to check off. So that's example one. If you could go to the next slide. Example two is where it gets a little more complicated, and there are a number of people affected by this. So this is the largest parcel where voters are affected. This is Foxtel Apartments. The main property address is 3701 DeBelle Street. And James, if you'll go to the next one, the close-up view, you'll notice the same situation. In this situation, the line between the city and county actually cut clips two of the buildings. And so I believe in this particular property, there were over 17 voters that we know of whose rent is going to pay Clarkston taxes but are ineligible to vote in elections. Their district is the Jolly Avenue Elementary District. And so in this case, we've basically, you know, because of whether it's an administrative error, or somewhere down the line when annexation happened, or somebody drew parcel lines, some box didn't get checked. What I've been told is the only way to fix this is through fully annexing that property. And this is representative, there's other single-family homes that are also included in this, but this is the largest, the single-largest grouping of voters. It could be more than 17. If you notice, there's a number of unit numbers there. It is really difficult to check voter eligibility when no one is registered at the property. And so our city clerk actually did have access to this information. The only information that was sent to our city is people who are registered to vote at either of the Clarkston precincts. So just wanted to illustrate the point. What we're doing is we're asking the General Assembly to, it's the, not the only way to approach this. It's the easiest in terms of the administrative burden on our staff, and it's the most authoritative to get them to go through the list of parcels that we have, people who are, you know, somewhere on that line. All of them are paying 100% of their taxes to Clarkston. We're not pulling anything from the county. There's no tax bills changing. It's just making sure that when it comes to service delivery, or, you know, any applications, if somebody wanted to build an ADU, or EMS dispatch, that they don't run into issues in the future, like two of our previous residents did. So that's, I'll take questions if anybody has any questions on this, or...
Thank you. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the work that Councilmember Perkins has put into this. And I want to say, without any claims to the contrary, that I totally support people being able to vote where they are being taxed. But this is very complicated. Mr. Perkins has shown a couple of items that are straightforward and need to be addressed. But there are some other things that have come up about certain parcels that are on the list. One of them is 3873 Nielsen Court. This was recently added to the list. It's not currently contiguous to the city limits. It's being, it's being taxed by the city, but they vote in unincorporated DeKalb. And it appears that the distinguishing, what distinguishes where you vote is the city limits. And the GIS department has a map that shows that. So I think, even though we may not know where somebody votes, we can see where they're eligible. But in this case, 3873 is on the list. It's being taxed by Clarkston, but they vote in unincorporated. It's clearly all of the property is in unincorporated. And I think that this is most likely an error by the tax office, because none of it is in Clarkston at all. So we, it doesn't seem reasonable to annex a piece of property into the city in order to fix something when it doesn't, it's not even adjacent to the city limits. There are a couple of others that are very difficult. There have been two changes very recently that DeKalb County made to some parcels that are on this list. They have subdivided on two parcels, they have subdivided the back portion of the property that was in DeKalb County and set that up as a separate parcel. And that needs to be looked into. Again, that was in DeKalb County and set that up as a separate parcel. And that needs to be looked into. Again, the whole parcel is being taxed by DeKalb, I mean, by the, by the city, which is wrong, but that needs to be looked into. What does it mean that this property now, and there's another one also, now has two parcels? And when I looked up the information at GIS, the new parcel is showing that it is taxed, would be taxed in Clarkston. The old parcel is showing that it would be, not be taxed in Clarkston. So, we've got two of those. Finally, we've got an issue of sort of parity. This whole issue came about because DeKalb County had made a mistake and thought somebody who was being taxed in Clarkston should not be voting in Clarkston, based on where they defined the line. And so, this came about when somebody went to vote and couldn't vote. The, the remedy for that was that the city deannexed all of the property. And so, that resolved the issue, that they no longer pay Clarkston property taxes, and they vote in unincorporated. However, we've got multiple properties in the city that are on the list, where the tiniest sliver of their property is in Clarkston. You can't see it, but Mark, one of the, one of your slides showed one, where the tiny back little corner of a property is within the city limits. The whole property is taxed. They vote in a, an unincorporated DeKalb, so that's a problem. But I don't know that annexing the whole thing into Clarkston, when they aren't given the opportunity to say, "My property is split, and I've got a tiny little bit that's in Clarkston." So, there, there are sundry issues with this. And then, the final one is that there are five parcels on the list that the city has already annexed. And there's no problem with the voting. It's in the city limits. It was annexed. They vote in the city. And I, I think it's questionable about whether we want to send a, a list of properties to the legislature and, and say, "Annuex this stuff that perhaps could be," as the city manager, city attorney mentioned last time, "communication between the city and the county to just give them the records and say, 'This is already part of Clarkston. It's already been annexed.'" So, I just share that with you to say that it's very complicated, and we absolutely must get the situation resolved, where people are paying taxes and not being allowed to vote. But I do think we need to decide whether annexing the whole property, when, when a few square feet at the back of their property is actually in Clarkston.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from the council at this time? Councilman Carroll?
So, I guess I don't see the downside to annexing, because they're already paying Clarkston taxes. All this does is it clears up service delivery and allows them to vote. So, if you're already paying taxes in full to Clarkston, because 10 feet of your property are in Clarkston, it can only be beneficial to you to be annexed, because you're not paying any more taxes, and all you're doing is you're getting the right to vote, and you're getting additional services. If you don't want to vote, you know, there's no gun to your head. No one's gonna make you vote. If you don't want the additional services, you can opt out of those too. You know, you can say you don't want Clarkston police to come. But it's only beneficial to you if you're already paying taxes to get the services that you're paying the taxes for. And I think that, you know, there's nothing more American than saying, "If you pay taxes in the area, you have the right to vote in the area." I think that's what the revolutionaries fought for. And, you know, you can always find, you can always find quibbles, you can always find, you know, different parcels where like, "Well, I don't know if you've talked to this person where they actually want to be in or not." And they can always be deannexed later if they want to. But in the meantime, if they're paying taxes, it seems logical, they should have at least the right to choose to vote, the right to choose to get the services. And that's all this is doing with annexation, is it's asking for them to have those rights.
Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah. The only thing I'll say to that is, I think that the list of the 20 parcels excludes the five that you mentioned, Susan. I could be wrong.
No, they're two lists.
But the one that was presented to us doesn't have those five on there, right?
They're two, two agenda items. One does not have them, one does have them.
So, we could just vote for the 20 that don't have the five you dispute about, and that would seem to resolve the issue?
Well...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That seems simple, but...
I need to address something.
All right, that you got, you got two.
This is it.
But let, let Vice Mayor Johnson talk, and then...
We got you.
I have a question, and either one of you three that just spoke, four actually, can answer. We, we, we talked about this earlier this year, and the city attorney gave us a lot of pointers as to what we could do as a city without going to our legislators to nip this in the bud. Our planning and zoning director created a form that could have been used to get this information in front of the people that needed to see it and could make these changes. From January, February until now, nobody has touched a thing. So, are you gonna tell me that we're just gonna take this to the legislators and say, "We don't want to do it, you do it"? Because the city attorney said, "It's all there." Maybe it's just a mistake, a quick fix. I don't have staff members, but I did speak to the city, city manager to see if this was in their wheelhouse, if they could take these 20, well, I don't know, it may have changed overnight, I don't know, but take these addresses and, and see what we could do with them before we, in this current situation that this government is in, to our legislators. Is there, can we give this a shot? I want these people to be able to vote wherever they have, we have two years before our next election. And I think with the staff that we have, with their knowledge and the resources that the city attorney gave us all the information. I was gonna walk this stuff in the office on Thursday, well, today is Thanksgiving threw me off, and I was asked not to, because it wasn't my job. And I respected that. So, it's just a matter of getting the information to the people that can make the change. And then, if we can't do it, when we take it to our legislators, we can say, "We tried everything we could to fix this problem. Now, it's up to you guys. Can you just annex us? We, we're exhausted. We don't have any more measures. Nothing else we can do." But I don't think this should be our first resort.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hood wanted to make a short comment.
Just on one parcel, and it has to do with service delivery. And that's part of what this is, to make sure that people knew who to call, whether it's for police or whatever. But one of the parcels that is on the list is surrounded on either side by parcels that are not in Clarkston. And so, you, you can't see it, because we don't have a good map, but you're driving down the street, Clarkston, 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 not Clarkston, not Clarkston, yes, Clarkston, not Clarkston, not Clarkston, not Clarkston. Now, how is that person supposed to know who to call? Because there one, this would put one lot all by itself into the city. That doesn't make sense to me. And so, that's...
Thank you for your perspective on that. I appreciate your clarity. Anything else? I will, city manager, is it okay if we have staff to speak on that? And I have to respect the city manager on this.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, council. So, on this, there is a few. I think it's 3783 you're speaking about. The neighboring property, 90% of it is in the city limits, but there's that 10% slice that's not, so that property would have to come in before 3783 could come in the city, because we can't create islands. That's illegal in the state of Georgia. Further on that, the city attorney last time advised that if we could not go this route that's proposed now, that voluntary annexation, where each property owner could submit their own application, submit it to the city, pay the fees, and go through the whole annexation process as they come in, that is something we could do as well. And then, the process you have in front of you now would be a lot less work on staff, for sure, but we're happy to go whichever way y'all decide. And I think most of these seem pretty clear, because it is voting based on where your bedroom is. And to address other concerns that Councilwoman Hood brought up, staff is aware of those changes, and we have scheduled a meeting with the city attorney to discuss those issues on Thursday, and we have submitted an open records request to DeKalb County, requesting more information on why those changes were made.
Okay, thank you. And a quick question. If we were to allow these individuals to self-annex, is it something where the council can waive that fee for those individuals?
I would say that would be up to your discretion. You could waive it.
Okay, as an option.
What is the fee?
Well, how much is the fee?
I believe it currently, it's about $1,000.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not their fault.
It's not their fault. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions while we have our director present to address your concerns at this time? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much, and thank you, city manager, for allowing the director to speak on this item. So, with that, any, yes, Councilman Carroll?
I have a motion, but if you, that's what you're gonna ask for, I can wait till you...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve the resolution to add the 20 parcels within the city limits.
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to, to add the 20 parcels?
Yeah, there's two resolutions, one for 25 parcels, one for 20 parcels. This is for the 20 parcel one.
Okay. The 20 parcels to the General Assembly, to send that to the General Assembly. Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 20 parcels to go to the Georgia Assembly for the boundaries. Okay? Ready for a question?
I have a couple items I'd like to address, discussion, if that's all right.
Okay.
All right. So, I do want to note the, I believe the parcel that was referred to on the, that is not contiguous, should be contiguous, it's right next to a parcel that's partially brought in to the city. The back part isn't. So, that's 3873 Nielsen Court. And again, they are not eligible to vote in Clarkston, but they have been paying city property taxes for a while. So, the contiguous thing, for those of you who don't know, basically, when you do annexation, I think our planning and zoning director just mentioned this, you can't, you know, go and say, "Hey, I want this," you know, one random, you can't basically create a Lesotho in the middle of South Africa when you're doing zoning, where you bring in, you know, one house, and then it's surrounded by houses that aren't inside a city. You have to make sure that there's a connecting point, you know, to the city itself. And so, that's when we talk about, you can't create islands, you can't skip a couple of houses, bring one house in. Some part of that property has to be touching the city boundary. And so, this, because it's a whole annexation, we're bringing in the properties together, it would create one contiguous connecting piece. Again, with people who are paying city taxes, some are eligible to vote, part of the property's not in it. 3873 is not eligible to vote. The, the question regarding, this is, the property in question is 1092 Nielsen Drive, so the back part of that property does actually connect to the city. It is on the other side of the two properties that were asked to be deannexed. However, they are paying city taxes. If we wanted to go to them and inform them, you know, have a conversation with them and say, "Hey, do you want to be in or out?", you know, that's totally fine with me. I leave that to discretion of my colleagues. However, they are still paying city taxes. The split parcel that happened, that our planning and zoning director mentioned, that is something that we discovered actually last week, where it sounds like what DeKalb did is they administratively went in, split a lot, created a second address that is not connected to any street, without checking with the city. So, that, I think, was an administrative error. We are looking into it to make sure how that happens. Obviously, that impacts setbacks. Literally, one of the properties, that lot line splits the house. So, now, there's a house that's partially in the city and partially not, but it's built across two lots. So, again, this is an administrative thing that never should have happened. It, you know, will get fixed as we get this stuff fixed as well. The other thing on the process, the second process that was mentioned, I do want to remind y'all, we did look into that. That was shut down by the council the month after. We discussed this. I was working with staff to reach out to the affected property owners and just inform them and give them the option. I was asked to make sure I got a consensus with the council via email, and that was, I was told that that was not the route that the council wanted to take by a majority. And so, again, we've tried that. The idea that we have not tried that is not true. It was shut down and deferred to this meeting. If we wanted to go that route, I'm also open to it. This is the most authoritative, I think, simplest way of going about it. One final piece, the risks of doing the 60% or 100% annexation method, where we have everybody apply and go through that process, is it is more labor-intensive to our staff. It also runs the risk of folks opting out, which could create more complicated service delivery based on where these parcels line up. So, I think this is the simplest, less risky option to us as a city, to make sure that we're just doing right by the people that pay our salaries, and make sure that they don't run into any issues, whether it's at the ballot box or when they call 911. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
If we go through the administrative process to annex by application of any, any affected property owner, right? Is there also, there's also the risk that the property owner may want to go in the opposite direction for deannexation, right?
Yeah.
So, we didn't really spell that out, but I think it beneficial that we note that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay. All right. All in favor to, to have the 20 parcels to go to the Georgia General Assembly? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So, nay. So, with that, let me ask you a question. Well, it didn't pass, so we'll just, we'll, we'll move on to the next item. And so...
Sorry, point of order. Can you read the votes off again?
Right. What were the votes?
Are you voting nay?
Three. I'm voting nay.
You're voting nay.
I voted nay.
You have to say it.
Nay. Nay.
I didn't hear it.
Okay. I said, I said it nay, kind of softly. I apologize for that. Nay. All right. We'll move to the next one, which is B, and that is to consider a resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the Forty Oaks Structure Encapsulation Project to be funded through SPHLOS II, and that is Mr. Seaton.
Good evening, everyone. The Forty Oaks has suffered damage over the years. So, the purpose of this is to prevent further damage. It's invested with asbestos as well as lead. So, staff, we reached out to two vendors. We had two vendors. The first vendor, which was the highest, was Griffin, came in at $36,275. The low-end bidder, J.M. Lee, came in at $26,000. The project, the scope of work, what they're gonna do is they're gonna come in and encapsulate the sides of, in the roof area of the structure. And the reason they're gonna do that, because they don't want to touch the sign areas where the asbestos, the lead is present, because maximizing that exposure would be a high risk. So, with that, they will be under a year contract, where they will be responsible for making sure everything is in place. They will do that, make sure that the material that they use is FEMA-recommended, which it would be, whatever is it, it would be... it will be water resi, it will be water resistant, it will be UV resistant, it will be fire resistant, everything in the specifications of what FEMA recommend. This project will come out of parks and recreation category, it will go through SPOLOST, will come out of SPOLOST II for the funding. And with this, they will have thirty days in order to complete the project. Anything after thirty days will be two hundred and fifty dollars a day. Staff has been in contact with the contractors, which it shouldn't take longer than a week and a half. And we pushing to get this done because with the House will understand the value, the history of it, but something needs to be done to stop the destruction from happening. So, we're asking not only for the twenty-six thousand, but five thousand contingencies, because just in case it's a little over twenty-six thousand, we want to make sure that we got all in its cup.
So, so what is the final amount that you want?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, okay.
Twenty-six plus a five.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Seaton. I'll entertain a motion from the council, and to make sure when you do the motion, please include the amount.
I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move to approve a resolution for the emergency decapitation of Forty Oaks to be funded under, through SPOLOST II in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve a resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the Forty Oaks Structure Encapsulation Project to be funded through SPOLOST II in the amount of thirty-one thousand. Is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor to approve the resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the amount forty, for, contract for Forty Oaks Structure Encapsulation Project to be funded through SPOLOST II in the amount of thirty-one thousand, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay, motion passed, thank you all. And so, we're coming to the home stretch, the last one. I'm gonna miss this so much. Consent agenda to be handled by the elder of the council, Councilman Carroll, take it away.
All right, I move that we approve consent agenda seven A to approve the proposed twenty-two six city council and regular medium work session date, seven B to approve resolution awarding professional service agreement to the most responsible, responsible bidder F.S. Scarborough LLC provide resurfacing, striping, patching, related tasks specified by G.O.T., local assistance, L.R.A. twenty-twenty-five street research and vegetation bid in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-two cents for announced SPOLOST II, seven C to approve resolution awarding professional service agreement to the most responsible, responsible bidder, HSPN Construction LLC with the construction of Cisbo's Relays Street Committee in a location mark street in the amount of eighty-two thousand seventy-three dollars twenty cents for announced SPOLOST I, D eight seventy to approve resolution awarding professional service agreement to the most responsible and responsible bidder Freeze and Nichols, providing conceptual design services for the Norman Road dam, dam rehabilitation replacement project in the amount of four hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for announced SPOLOST II, seventy to approve resolution awarding professional service agreement to the most responsible and responsible bidder, K.B. Advisory Group to complete the annexation feasibility in the amount of eighty-seven thousand for announced general fund budget, seven to approve the estimate of local maintenance improvement grants, L.M. grants, street maintenance list for twenty-two six funding, twenty-two six element grants, official figure twenty-two seven upload, the twenty-two six element grant application, seven G W. letters for the heavenly culture, world peace, restoration of light, H W.P.L., Georgia. Second.
All right. Thank you so much to our debater and our speed, let's give that man some water, he deserves it after that. So, we have, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda items from A to G, and I am not going to try to up that. So with that, council, are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it passed, thank you. So we, earlier when we did the agenda, we made a change, and we moved K, which was to consider a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Pond and Company, for the rewrite of the city comprehensive plan in the amount of a hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be funded out of the general fund budget, to be moved to A, and at this time, with City Manager, we'll allow Mr. Edwards to present this information to the council.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. We did have a group that reviewed these, all the bids that came in, we had seven bids, and this scored highest by almost a full point, and the pricing did come in at one of the lower rates as well, so we feel comfortable presenting this to you all. This will include a full rewrite of our comprehensive plan and two small area plans to encompass Tahoe Village and the Rocket Point Development for any future development, not any development plans, but future development there. And with that, we are recommending approval of this contract, and Mr. Randy Gibbs is here, if you would like to speak with him as well.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion on this item.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve a resolution awarding professional service agreement to the most responsive and, well, Pond and Company, for the rewriting of the city's comprehensive plan in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be funded out of the general fund budget.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Pond and Company, for the rewrite of the city's comprehensive plan in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be funded out of the general fund. Is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pa.
Abstentions.
Okay, we got one abstention, okay. But motion passed. So we moved, we moved to do, it was A, now it's a B, and that is to consider an ordinance to provide, sorry, okay, to provide an ordinance to provide the adoption of a budget proposed by the City Manager containing estimates of the proposed revenues and expenditures of the city of Clarkston, Georgia, and to provide for the levy of taxes for expenses of said city for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-six, and the ending, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. City Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, cut your microphone.
Okay, I would like to present just one detailed change within the administration budget. It does not include a cost, a estimate change as far as expenditures, but there were a list of projects within personnel services and benef, personnel, not personnel, but professional services for strategic consulting in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and digitization of files for fifteen thousand dollars. So we're wanting to reduce strategic consulting by five thousand dollars, making it twenty-five thousand dollars, and increase the funding for digitization of files to twenty thousand dollars, and replacing the digitization project with financial software implementation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we, I'll entertain a motion, that, that, that's everything you wanted to make sure to follow up? Okay, thank you, and we've had several, we've had several meetings as well as our public hearing, so tonight is the night where we would vote on the, to adopt the budget, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion.
Yes, Councilwoman Bill.
I move that we consider an ordinance to provide the adoption of the budget proposed by the City Manager, with all the amendments just stated containing estimates of the proposed revenue and expenditures for the city of Clarkston, Georgia, and to provide the levy of taxes for expenses of said city for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
A second.
A second.
Okay, all right, council, gotta move fast. It's been properly moved and seconded to, to consider an ordinance to provide the adoption. So do you want to approve the ordinance? Okay, okay, all right, thank you. To approve an ordinance to provide the adoption, adoption of a budget proposed by the City Manager containing estimates of the proposed revenues and expenditures of the city of Clarkston, as well as the change that she provided, and to provide for the levies of taxes for expenses of said city for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Is there any more discussion on this item?
Do I need to remake the motion to include all the amendment?
It was...
I just said whatever, to the amendments that you said, but I haven't go down, it's fine.
We're good? Good? Okay, we're good. Ready for a question?
Okay.
All in favor to approve the adoption of the, the budget proposed by the City Manager for, with the proposed revenues and expenditures of the city, along with the updated proposal expenditures, and to provide for the levy of taxes for expenses of said city for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. You want to oppose? Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passed. All right, we'll move to the next one, which on your paper is a B, is, it's actually a C now, and that is to consider the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Buddha Guran for Montreal Gas and Company LLC DBA Chevron Food Mart located at eleven oh nine Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. And that would be Clerk Mitchell.
Yes, owner of Montreal Gas and Company LLC doing business at Chevron Food Mart has submitted an change of ownership application, excuse me, for an alcohol license to sell beer, wine, and malt beverages at the gas station and convenience store formerly known as The Lung Bros. LLC. The Alcohol Review Committee received and reviewed the new alcohol license application and verified the business license has been issued, all onsite inspections and measurements have been performed, the background checks were conducted and passed, and the zoning compliance has also been performed. The A R.C. has determined that the change of ownership application complies with all requirements and recommends approval.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the change of ownership and alcohol license application for, I don't know what to say, Boot Haag Guru from, for Montreal, Montreal Gas and Company LLC DBA Chevron Food Mart located at eleven oh nine Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one.
Second.
All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Buddha, right, Guran for Montreal Gas and Company LLC DBA Chevron Food Mart located at eleven oh nine Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three zeros two one. Is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, we have one abstention, motion passed. We'll continue with to consider, it's your C, it's our D, and that is to consider the change of ownership and alcohol license application for this, this Ha, is that, this Ha?
This Ha.
This Ha.
Where are you?
Are y'all?
We're here.
For nine-three-five Investment LLC DBA Stop &amp; Save located at nine-thirty-five North Indian Creek, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one.
Yes, owner of nine-thirty-five Investments LLC DBA Stop &amp; Save submitted a change of ownership application for an alcohol license to sell beer, wine, and malt beverages at the grocery store formerly known as Stop &amp; Save Group LLC. The A R.C. reviewed and received and reviewed the new alcohol license application, verified the business license has been issued, all onsite inspections and measurements have been performed, background checks were conducted and passed, and zoning compliance has also been performed. The A R.C. is recommending approval since all of the requirements and recommendations, the requirements have been met.
Okay, thank you, and at this time, I'll take a motion.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I move that we approve the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Vishal Ariel for nine-thirty-five Investment LLC DBA Stop &amp; Save located at nine-thirty-five North Indian Creek, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the change of ownership and alcohol license for Vishal Ariel for nine-thirty-five Investment LLC DBA Stop &amp; Save located at nine-thirty-five North Indian Creek, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. Is there any discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? And any abstentions?
Yes, abstentions.
Okay, one abstention. We'll move to D, which is actually E, it's your D, our E, and that is to consider the change of ownership and alcohol license for Raj Limbu for Pulse Gas LLC DBA Rocket Shell and Food located at thirteen oh seven Rocket Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. Clerk Mitchell, please.
Yes, owner of Pulse Gas LLC DBA Rocket Shell and Food submitted an alcohol license change of ownership application for a sale of beer and wine, malt beverages at a gas station and convenience store formerly known as Jocelyn USA Inc., DBA Rocket Food Mart. The A R.C. received and reviewed the new alcohol license application, verified the business license has been issued, all onsite inspections and measurements have been performed, background checks were conducted and passed, and zoning compliance has also been performed. The A R.C. is recommending approval due to all of the requirements being met.
Okay, thank you very much, I will take a motion at this time.
I move that we approve the application.
Okay, Councilman Carroll?
I move that we approve the application.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded, I think Councilman Perkins, be it your council, Councilwoman Hood. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Raj Limbu for Pulse Gas LLC DBA Rocket Shell and Food located at thirteen oh seven Rocket Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. Is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? All those who abstained, please...
Abstained.
Thank you. We'll move now, it's your E, but it is our, our F, and that is to consider a resolution appointing members to the Greenway Steering, Greenway Trails Steering Committee in support of Phase One of the Greenway Trails Project. And I will turn this over to the City Manager, and also will turn the chair to Vice Mayor Johnson for a second.
Okay. So, this is presentation of Exhibit One of the Greenway Trail Plan Steering Committee Resolution. There's a list of names that are, that have been presented, for those names that are confirmed for participation on the Steering Committee. Each of the members has been provided with the requirements, roles and responsibilities of the committee members, and all, all those persons named have accepted those responsibilities.
Thank you. So everybody on the list has confirmed that they're wanting to participate?
Yes, ma'am.
And they were selected by staff and yourself?
And, and talks with members of council.
Okay. And how, what is the total number of, that you would like to have on the, as part of this committee?
Fifteen, this is fifteen names. We also reached out to property management at the apartment complexes that would be a part of the SPUR connections, and we haven't received confirmation from any of the apartment complexes. I had two to say that they would return call, and that hasn't happened as of today. Mr. Kaiser reached out at some point, and I did as well. We would love to have members of the apartment complexes, their property management or, or owner representation.
Okay.
To, yes, ma'am.
So the number may change in the future?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
We still have room for that change, Mr. Kaiser. I would think so, yes, ma'am.
I have a motion.
Go right ahead, Mr.
I move that we approve the Greenway Trail Plan Steering Committee. Should I name the names?
No.
Okay. I would make one note in that motion. Byron Delgado is, his last name's actually spelled Delgado with a D instead of a T, but. FYI. So I move we approve.
A second.
Okay, now that it has been a motion and a second, any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion pass.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll now move to F, which is your, it's actually G. And that is to consider an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 6, to add a definition of townhomes and amend definition for duplex, triplex, quadruplex, and multifamily dwellings. And city manager, we'll have Mr. Edwards to do that.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, the first change we're requesting here is a modification to dwelling multifamily. And that new definition would read, "A building designed to be occupied by five or more families living independently of each other and doing their cooking in said building," also known as multifamily. We would update attached single-family dwelling to read with a minimum of three and a max, oh, attached single-family townhome would be attached single-family dwellings with a minimum of three and a maximum of seven single-family dwellings that are attached horizontally by a common sidewall with each dwelling unit being designed to be occupied by not more than one family. Dwelling duplex, triplex would be "A building containing not more than three kitchens designed to be occupied by not more than three families living independently of each other that may be attached horizontally and/or vertically." Dwelling two-family duplex, "A building containing not more than two kitchens designed to be occupied by not more than two families living independently of each other." So that it may be attached horizontally or vertically. And dwelling duplex, "A single structure containing four dwelling units that are attached horizontally and/or vertically."
That's it, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Edwards. At this time, I will take a motion on this one.
I have a motion.
I have a question.
Okay. Well, wait to the motion, and then we'll do the question, and Councilman Perkins.
Thanks. Make sure, because I have my agenda item changed. So I move that we approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 7, to add a definition for townhomes and amend definitions for duplex, triplex, quadruplex, and multiple-family dwellings.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 7, to add a definition for townhomes and amend definitions for duplex, triplex, quadruplexes, and multifamily dwellings. And you had a question, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, just two quick items. Number one, there, there, in the definition of dwelling multifamily, there needs to be a correction. It says five or more dwellings living independently, and it should say five or more families living independently. I mentioned this to Richard, and he's.
Yeah, we can get that now. I think you may have an older copy, because the copy we have now does say five or more families living independently of each other.
Right. All right. And here's my real question. Put on my glasses, so I can see. Okay, so the townhouses are defined as between three and seven single-family dwellings attached horizontally. The triplex and the quadruplex, which would have three and four dwelling units respectively, can be attached horizontally or vertically. So can you explain what distinguishes a triplex that is horizontal or a quadruplex that is horizontal from a townhouse that has three or four units?
Yeah, I would think on that, so with the townhomes, they have to be horizontal. So it's just, you face one way. Whereas with the, with the triplex, you could have one, one, and then one in the back and still be attached at the side. So you could do an L shape with those. With townhomes, it would typically just be a front-facing solid line where it's connected horizontally each way like that.
Okay. So if somebody submitted a request for a triplex, and they intended to put them next to each other, is that still a triplex, or is that a townhouse?
I think, I think one of the analogies I gave Councilman Perkins in our meeting was kind of like bourbon and whiskey. So with that, a triplex can be a townhome, but not every townhome is a triplex. So yes, it's a, it would just depend on how it's developed and built out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from the council?
So whether it's a townhome or a triplex, does that affect the taxes or any, anything else?
I am not a tax expert, but I would think taxes are typically based on the zoning and the use. So both being single-family attached, I would not anticipate any major tax differences in the two.
Another question I have.
Okay.
Where it says multiple families, it says five or more. Is there a maximum?
There is not a maximum currently. That would just be based on how a developer would want to build a multifamily building.
Thank you.
So let me ask you this question. A duplex could be vertical, right? So someone could take their existing home, potentially, and then convert it into a duplex if they have a basement? Or they have a significantly large attic or unfurnished attic, technically?
Yes, ma'am, they could if they met the minimum dwelling unit size.
Okay.
But typically, if you do convert, there were required inspections that occur to make sure it's up to city code.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Because I think that was a concern before. Hearing now?
I do have a point of order question. Do you want me to call for an amendment to the motion to make the correction? Since this is what we have in front of us, the point that Councilwoman Hood brought up on it, reading five or more dwellings, where it should read five or more families. I could do a real quick amendment to that. So occupied by five or more. The redline version has families there, I believe.
It does. It does. Okay, so we can.
Yeah, I think on that, what you could say is to amend the ordinance to read that. I think there's just a small difference in the ordinance based on what the staff reported in the redline said.
Okay. If I made that, I'd like to make amendment to the motion then.
Okay. And I'll just double-check with our attorney, Madam Attorney.
Can you repeat what the motion or question is there for the ordinance?
Just doing a quick, so on the ordinance, it reads, let's see, the definite, so it's under Section 1, under dwelling, multiple-family building designed to be occupied by five or more dwellings living independently of each other. And so I'd just be modifying it to read, be replacing dwellings with families.
Okay. Yes, so I didn't just announce that change with respect to the motion in the ordinance. Okay.
Just a minute. All right. So I'd like to amend my motion to replace the word dwellings under Section 1. It's in paragraph 1. Currently, it reads five or more dwellings living independently of each other, and I would like it to read five or more families living independently of each other.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Bill, you're pondering.
Well, I just want to, well, I wanted to say something, but then we had started that, so. Oh, let him go for the motion. They second, so I can talk.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done motion second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved in second to amend where in that section. Now it says five or more families. Okay? Yes, go ahead.
And just a point of clarity, for this actual measure that's on the agenda before us, this is only to provide a concrete definition for townhome, because it doesn't exist, as well as a tax amendment to provide clarity on all the other future development as it relates to the designation of duplex, triplex, quadruplex, and multifamily dwellings.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Yep, okay. All right. You ready for the question? It's on the amendment first. There we go. All right, and that is to have the addition of changing it from where it was five or more dwellings to five or more families. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Now we're going to come to the big boy. And that is to approve an ordinance to amend the council. We're still on the first one, you hadn't changed yet, so we still, but thanks for being ready. Zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 7, to add a definition for townhomes and amend definitions for duplex, triplex, quadruplex, and multifamily with the amendment that says five or more families. Okay? Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Okay. Check. All right, now, we're going to move to H, which is G on your paper. And that's to consider an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to add, amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplex, triplexes, townhomes, and home occupation. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, this would be moving to allow duplexes in the NR2 with the conditional use permit, which would require three public meetings before it was voted on. It wouldn't be by right. Also, allowing duplexes in the RC zoning district by right. And then allowing townhomes in the town center zoning district with the conditional use permit as well. And allowing home occupations in the NRCD and RC zoning districts. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any questions.
Okay, council, I'll take a motion on this item.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the ordinance to amend the Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplexes, townhomes, and home occupation with the amendment of removing allowing duplexes in NR2 with the conditional use permit. So that would not be part of the change.
A second.
Okay, say that one more time.
So I move that we approve the ordinance to amend the Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplexes, townhomes, and home occupations with the amendment that duplexes would not be allowed in NR2 even with a conditional use permit. So essentially, it's just removing that first part of one that allows duplexes in NR2 with the conditional use permit.
Okay. All right, and it's been properly moved and seconded to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to add, amend the use table to expand the usage of, and removing the duplexes.
From NR2.
From NR2. Townhomes and home occupation. Okay, is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Carroll.
So if you remove the duplexes in NR2, at this point, all it's doing is it's allowing duplexes in residential commercial, which is already a denser use that allows commercial as well as residential. So I think it's logical to have duplexes there. Allowing townhomes and town center, again, only with conditional use, I think is logical. That's the densest district in the city. To exclude townhomes there, I think is kind of illogical. And finally, allowing home occupations in NRCD and RC. So home occupations are already allowed in NR1, NR2, and NR3. So it doesn't really make sense to exclude them again from the denser districts, which are NRCD and RC. So if you take out the duplex in NR2, which I understand is controversial, the rest of it seems logical. It doesn't affect any of the residential districts. It only affects the town center and the mixed residential commercial.
Okay. Any comments or discussion at this time?
I got one.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that the staff recommends these tax, these tax amendments. Is that correct, Mr. Edwards?
Yes, ma'am, staff does recommend approval of these tax amendments.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Is there a question about clarity?
Yes.
So Councilman Carroll, so you mentioned removing, I think I missed the conditional use permit thing. So you're saying remove it completely even with a conditional use permit? Or you're just making sure?
Remove it completely even with initial use permits. You could not apply for a conditional use permit to put a duplex in NR2 with this, with this, if you voted for this version. It would essentially be the status quo for NR2.
Yeah, let's, I can reread this out, just so this public's clear too. So the proposal on the table is to allow duplexes in the residential commercial zoning district by right, allow townhomes in the town center zoning district with the conditional use permit, and allow home occupations in the NRCD and RC zoning districts. So that's only our mixed-use zoning districts that would be affected by this.
Okay, all right. Any other comments at this time? Any other questions? Okay, you're ready, ready for the question and discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplexes not in NR2, townhomes, and home occupation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right. Nay on this one. Okay, then we're going to move to H, which is to consider an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Article A, Articles 3, Section 305, to amend residential zoning districts dimensional requirements in NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning districts. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this request, it would be looking to, number one, increase the FLORIA ratio for NR2 to .6 and NR3 to 1.0. This would keep the zoning districts in line with their intent as the NR2 is medium-density residential and NR3 is high-density residential. Two, creating a minimum 20% open space requirement for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning districts. Three, creating a minimum site area, which would be the minimum area required for a new lot in the applicable zoning district. This would also include reducing the total site area for NR3 from 5,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet.
Mr. Edwards. Yes, one second.
Yes, ma'am.
I need a point of order.
I voted incorrectly on the last item. I was on H already. I am a yea. I'm so sorry.
You need to make a motion to reconsider. But it has to come from the prevailing body. So would you like me to make a motion to reconsider?
Go right ahead.
I move to reconsider the previous agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to reconsider the previous agenda item. All those in favor to reconsider the previous agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay. All those who want to abstain, say abstention. Okay, motion pass. So let's go back to the previous item. And that item was to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 7 to, no, that's, that's, that was, yeah, Article 4, to add, amend the use table to expand the usage of duplex not in NR2, townhomes, and home occupations. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. All those.
See, we're confused with these items. You're saying seven, we're looking at four.
Okay.
So it's the one. Okay. It's the one that has duplexes, townhomes, and home occupation. We took NR2 out with the. We took NR2 out with the... That one.
It's page 505 on your packet.
Item G.
Which is now...
H.
Correct.
Correct. Yes, she does.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. All those opposed say nay. Okay. And it passed. It passed. Okay, so it passed. It passed. All right. Now, Mr. Edwards...
Attorney, can we confirm we did that right? Does it, is it legally passed?
We reconsidered?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Okay, we're good. All right. Now, Mr. Edwards, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but we didn't want to go too far with it. Thank you.
All right, no worries. I'll go ahead and start over. So this text amendment will do the following. One, increase the FLRA ratio for NR2 to 0.6 and NR3 to .10. This would keep the zoning districts in line with their intent as NR2 is medium-density residential and NR3 is high-density residential. Two, create a minimum 20% open space requirement for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning districts. Three, creating a minimum site area, which would be the minimum area required for a new lot in the applicable zoning district. This also includes reducing the total site area for NR3 from 5,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. Four, updating the minimum lot size to include 1,950 square foot lots for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning districts, and reducing the minimum lot size for single-family detached duplex and quadplex to 4,000 square feet in the NR3 zoning district. Five, creating a minimum site width, which would be the new width of any new lot created. Six, updating the minimum lot width for duplex and townhomes in the NR2 zoning district, and updating the minimum lot widths for duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes in the NR3 zoning districts. Seven, updating the minimum front setback for duplex and townhomes in the NR2 zoning district to 25, and updating the minimum front yard setbacks for duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes in the NR3 zoning district to 15. And since we obstruct duplexes from NR2, the duplex section would be irrelevant now. Eight, creating a 10-foot minimum building separation requirement for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning district. And nine, adding a footnote at the bottom of table 3.4 to clarify zero-foot setback between attached townhome units. And based on some public comment, I would like to clarify for this one, there are no changes to the NR1 zoning district. It's simply formatting the development standards table to make it consistent for all zoning districts for residential development.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. At this time, I'll take a motion for this item.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Articles 3, Section 305, to amend the residential zoning district dimensional requirements in, really should say NR2 and NR3 zoning districts. NR1, NR2, and NR3, but really, there's no changes in NR1.
Okay, is there a second? So I want you to repeat that again so we can all make sure.
Okay, I move that we approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Articles 3, Section 305, to amend residential zoning district dimensional requirements in the NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning districts.
Okay, is there a second?
Are you going to amend the NR1?
Well, that's the thing, is like, do I have to have that in the title? Because it doesn't change anything in NR1, but...
So it's technically an amendment to the NR1 because we are changing the table and striking sections and adding them to the other sections to make it consistent. There's no changes to the actual development standards. It's just a clerical fix within the chart.
Gotcha.
Okay.
A second.
All right, so you second that. Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, Section 305, to amend residential zoning districts dimensions, dimensional requirements in zoning NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning districts. Okay, is there any discussion about this item? Go ahead, Councilman Carroll.
So this process has been going on for a long time, since I was on the council back in 2017. Been working on this. There was a version of it that was proposed in 2019. There's a version that's proposed in 2023. The version that's proposed in 2024. It's consistent with our 2022 comprehensive plan that was... A 2020 comprehensive plan that was approved five years ago. It's consistent with the ARC feedback that we got from the last year. And when I proposed it in 2024, what was heard from the community is we want another year of feedback on this. So then we had another year of feedback. We had multiple ARC meetings. We've had multiple community meetings. And there has been compromises. So last year, what was proposed is originally is 1,400 square feet for every lot in NR3. And then that was changed to just 1,400 for townhomes and 2,500 for everything else. Then that got changed again now to 4,000 for everything except townhomes and 1,950 for just townhomes. And I won't say that that change has reached approval with every homeowner in NR3 because there's nothing on this earth that's going to reach approval with every single person. If you wait for that, if that's your criteria, you're just never going to pass the change. You know, the zoning will stay the same until Jesus comes back. But if you're going to try to make improvements, I think that this is a pretty incremental improvement. Basically, right now, nine lots per acre is what's allowed on NR3. This essentially makes it 12 lots an acre. So it's a very incremental change. It incrementally allows more townhomes. It incrementally makes housing mildly more affordable. I'm not going to say it makes it drastically more affordable, but there's some affordability improvement. There's some tax-based improvement. I'd never claim that this is a silver bullet that's going to prevent all tax increases. But over the course of years, if this change is passed, I think the tax increases will be lower than they would otherwise have to be because it will increase the tax base slightly. Because, you know, even if they build, you know, let's say just 20 townhomes a year, that's somewhere between $60,000 and $100,000. And our deficit is about, if you take away the ARPA funds, is around $400,000, $450,000. So over several years, it would begin to close the deficit. It won't do it next year, won't do it the after that, but it will improve things the next few years. So this is a moderate change. It's going to make moderate improvements. It's not going to drastically change neighborhoods. I know not everybody is happy with it, but I think that even the people that are unhappy with it admit that 1,950 is an approval over 1,400. So if we vote against this because the, because, you know, for whatever delay reason you want, last year was there wasn't a feedback. This year, the comprehensive plan is coming up. Two years from now, the comprehensive plan passes. I'm sure there will be another reason to delay. If you want a reason to delay, you can always find a reason to delay and always find a reason not to pass it. But the reality is, is that while you wait, Clarkston's going to get less affordable. Instead of townhomes, it'll be McMansions that cost $500,000, $600,000. And meanwhile, our deficit is going to get worse. And the tax increases will have to increase. The cuts to reduction force, the cuts to services will have to increase. And this is not a silver bullet for any of that. There's no silver bullet, but this is an improvement. And so even if you may not love every element of this, and I don't love every element because I had to make a lot of compromises, I think that this is a reasonable step forward and compromise towards improving affordability, towards improving our budget situation. And so I would ask for the council to vote for it.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback on this one and your comments and the tenacity that you continue to have for this. So with that, we made a motion for this, right? Okay.
Yep.
Is there any more discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Perkins.
So just one thing, you know, on the budget thing, I think it is, as Councilman Carroll noted, this is an appendice, it's not going to fix everything. But looking at our options as a municipality, we're not in a good spot in terms of being able to alleviate the tax burden to our constituents. And so I think if you pair any one of the arguments for or against this down to one thing, you could probably make a pretty good case for or against it. But we're looking at a complex system that is sort of the sum of all the parts. And so, yes, the budget is an issue. Having residents who can improve our median household income so that it can support local businesses. We have a lot of different things that we need to be doing. And honestly, we needed to be doing them 10, 15 years ago to avoid us getting into a situation where we're having to make the decision on whether or not we add that police officer that we need or we go to the cab and have them run our police service. I mean, that's a worst-case scenario. But we're getting close to that. You know, again, we talked about having to cut half a million dollars from the budget. Some of that was based on ARPA funding. But as we continue to grow and expand, there's a point where you can't, you know, you can't cut certain things, even in a home budget, right? There's a point where it's like, all right, we're eating rice and water, you know, or bread and water, whatever your preference is. You know, we, you know, that's no, you know, you're not surviving. You're thriving at that point. You're surviving. And I think if we're not careful, we could... Am I good? Okay. I think if we're not careful and don't make some of these hard decisions now, we're creating a much more difficult future for future councils and for future residents. You know, not necessarily new ones, but even those of us who reside here already. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments at this time? Any discussion points? Feedback? Okay. Hearing none. This is the NR3. NR3. Okay. So this one is to approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, Section 305, to amend residential zoning district dimensions, dimensional requirements in NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning districts. So first, I want to make sure that everybody here what the motion is. Everybody clear on the motion? Okay. Now, are you ready to vote on this motion? Okay? All in favor to approve the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, then I'll do nay. Then that doesn't pass. And then we'll move to the next one, which is to approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, to update development standards for townhomes in the NRCD, RC, and TC zoning districts. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a text amendment to update only the mixed-use districts within the zoning code. This would include A, amending minimum lot size to minimum site area, which will allow townhome developments to have a minimum site area, but still allow for a smaller lot size for the individual townhome units. B, increase the maximum building height in the TC zoning district from five stories, 75 feet, to seven stories, 100 feet. C, clarifies minimum site area for townhomes at 5,000 square feet in NRCD zoning districts. D, reduces the RC site area from 7,200 square feet to 5,000 square feet. E, included minimum site width requirements, which reflect the existing lot width requirements. F, updates to the minimum lot width requirements for townhomes in the NRCD district to 14 feet. G, updates to the front setback requirements for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district to 10 feet. H, updates to side setback requirements for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district. I, create a 10-foot minimum building separation for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district. J, adding a footnote at the bottom of table 3.6 to clarify a zero-foot setback between attached townhome units. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will, I'll take a motion for this item.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, to update development standards for townhomes in NRCD, RC, and TC zoning districts.
A second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, to update development standards for townhomes in the NRCD, RC, and TC zoning districts. Is there any more discussion on this item? Or discussion, Councilman Carroll? And then Councilwoman Bell.
So just briefly, this is similar to the 7G, now 7H, that we approved, and it only changes the standards in NRCD, RC, and TC to allow townhomes, which already are mixed-use districts that are designed to be denser. So this doesn't affect, you know, NR1, NR2, NR3 at all. It's only allowing townhomes in already areas where they're designed for commercial use as well. So I think that this is a logical corollary to pass this one if you supported the previous one.
Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, and I just want to, just for the public's knowledge, is that we worked with the ARC to adopt the Clarkston Summit data and recommendations, and this was a part of that engagement process with residents on the output of identifying diversified housing types, but also adding residential use to non-residential use and then incorporating the middle, the missing middle housing option.
Okay. And any other comments from the council on this item? Okay, and so, Mr. Edwards, as it stands right now, this is just making the standards very clear in terms of the NRCD and RC, because...
In town centers.
In town centers. Okay.
So if someone were to apply for a conditional use permit for a townhome in the TC zoning district, staff would have something to go off of a little bit more of what the regulations would be for TC.
Okay, and if we didn't have this, what would be the option? What would applicant face if they, if we didn't have this option?
For this one, if we did not do these, look, the table, your minimum lot area, lot size would be 5,000 square feet even for townhomes. So I don't know many developers who build them like that. So I think that would pretty much disallow townhomes and even in our mixed-use districts from reasonably being developed.
Okay. And then the maximum size for those would be what?
So the minimum lot size would be 1,400 square feet. So you're looking at typically a 14 by 100-foot lot for a townhome. And I think in the Glendale Rose, I think you all approved 1,600 square feet for those. So this would allow developments similar to Glendale Rose.
Okay. So it's kind of, I just want to make sure because we had, you had a question? Go ahead.
No, I was just listening.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Because I think the other piece is that, so you're saying 1,400 square feet right now?
Yeah, it would be a minimum, this, the request in front of you is to have a minimum of 1,400 square foot lots, which is typically going to be a 14-foot wide townhouse with a little bit of a front yard and a little bit of a rear yard. So some land ownership would come with these townhomes.
Okay. So otherwise, they'd have to get a variance if they wanted to?
They would need a variance or have to go through the PUD process as it's currently written in the code.
Okay. All right, any questions as far as this item?
No, we're...
Yes. Go ahead.
I think we've talked about changing our PUD process, right? So I think our current PUD process allows for certain things that typically aren't considered with this. Be disallowed with the PUD in the future if you kind of have ideas to change it or...
At this time, we don't have any corrections or changes to the PU district in front of us.
Okay.
But in conversations I've had with several council members and even several citizens, having a minimum lot size to be able to apply for a PUD towards maybe an acre or two acres or more, I don't think it would disallow it, but it may restrict which properties would be able to apply for a PUD.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, are you ready for the question? All those in favor to consider an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, to update development standards for townhomes in the NRCD, RC, and TC zoning districts, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So this one will be a nay. And then the next one is to consider an ordinance to amend the city of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 6, to amend the off-street parking requirements.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, the changes that would be made would be, So on this one, the changes that would be made would be, one, remove Section 607 A and B due to conflicting and redundant language. That is the language that says that our minimum is our maximum, so we have parking exacts as our code is currently written. Two, amend the off-street parking requirements for apartments, condominiums, and other multifamily attached uses to be zero-point-eight-five spaces per studio unit, zero-point-nine spaces per one-bedroom unit, one-point-six-five spaces per two-bedroom unit, two spaces per three-bedroom unit, and zero-point-one-five spaces per unit for guest parking. And this is based on recommendations from the engineers, Transportation Engineers Guide. And three, amend the off-street parking requirements for cottage housing to require one parking space per dwelling and zero-point-five spaces per unit for guest parking. Four, amend the off-street parking requirements for residences, including duplexes, triplexes, and quadplex, to require one space per dwelling unit and zero-point-one-five spaces per unit for guest parking. Five, amend the off-street parking requirements for townhomes to one-point-five space per dwelling unit. Six, separate single-family residences from other residential use types and maintains the two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Seven, add accessory dwelling unit, ADU, to Table 6.1 and maintains the required one space per ADU pursuant to Section 4.13. And just a brief overview of this, this is actually an increase in parking for most developments, except for the duplex, triplex, and quadplex. It is a slight reduction, but an increase with requiring the guest parking for all duplex, triplex, and quadplex. And I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and I'll entertain a motion on this one.
I have a motion.
Councilman Carroll.
I move that we make the change only to remove Section 607 A, B, which makes the maximum and the minimum the same, and not make the other parking changes.
Alright, wait a minute. Okay, say that one more time.
I make a motion that we approve only the portion, the text amendment, to remove Section 607 A, B, and not make the other changes. And I'll, if I get a second, I'll explain.
Yes, if you can get Page 540, it's just striking A and B as shown there under Section 607. Page 540.
And what are we striking?
Just A and B. So A reads, "The total number of permitted parking spaces shall not exceed one hundred percent of the minimum number of off-street parking spaces required by the type of permitted use," which is, that's the one that's saying that we have a minimum, but the minimum is the maximum. And B is "The number of off-street parking required by the use are as follows." That is repeated in the two sentences above that already.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 6, to amend the off-street parking requirements, removing Section 607 A?
And B.
And B.
Can I explain what I mean by that?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, under the current Clarkston parking code, the minimum is the maximum. So like, let's say, the minimum is you can have five spots for your business. You're not allowed to have six. So even if you wanted to add a customer and have a sixth spot, you couldn't do it. And so that's the same thing for a home. If you want to create an extra guest parking spot for your home, you're not allowed to. You would have to get a variance. So this is just removing that to create a single minimum, and you can go above that floor if you want to. So if you're a homeowner and you want a guest parking spot, you can add it without a variance. If you're a business owner, you need more parking for your customers, you can add that without a variance. The other changes, understand, were controversial, and, you know, there's some disputes about them, but I think most people agree on that change, that there shouldn't, you should be free to add more parking if you want to. The minimum should not be the maximum. So I feel like, in the spirit of consensus building, hopefully, we can all agree on that change, even if we can't agree on the other parts of the parking change.
So you're saying you're eliminating Section 2 of the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm eliminating all the other changes. The only change I'm making is that the minimum and the maximum are not the same. It just sets a minimum, and you can go above the minimum if you want more parking. So that's, that's the only change to the parking ordinance as currently exists under this motion.
And as previously asked by other councilpeople, that would just be an administrative change. It would be no change in how we actually administer the code.
So, yes, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Hood. Okay, I'll do that one.
So, none of the other changes that are shown on this are part of this motion?
So this motion would be changing A and B and then leaving Table 6.1 as it's currently written in our zoning code.
Okay.
What page is the actual agenda? 540 is the attached, what page is the actual agenda?
Thirty-five.
So, just to be clear, we are not modifying anything on this Table 6.1 of the...
That's correct. The only modification is just saying that these, all the numbers that are currently in 6.1 are all minimums, they're not also maximums.
Gotcha.
So you're allowed to go above them if you want to. If you want an extra parking spot for your home, you can. You want an extra parking spot for your business, you can. You don't have to get a variance.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
I still haven't found the agenda itself.
It's on Page 535. 535 is the agenda itself. 536 starts the staff analysis. And then 5, and 537 is the ordinance, yeah.
This one?
Can I ask a question just for clarity?
Sure, yes.
Since I'll have to make some changes to this draft ordinance. You said you just want to keep Section 1.
It'll only be Section 1. It won't be any of Section 2.
Okay, but is there a need to actually delete Paragraph B if the only change you're making?
Well, B is duplicative, so that's, that's a reason to delete it.
Okay.
It's, it's the same sentence twice.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Thanks.
So that's all, that's, it's literally just taking out the minimum and the maximum and taking out a duplicative sentence, and that's it. Otherwise, 6.1 stays the same as it is under current law.
Okay, thank you.
And we can have a discussion. Hopefully, no one thinks that businesses shouldn't be allowed to add parking if they want to, and homeowners shouldn't be allowed to park in if they want to. Yeah, I mean, if anybody has this, wants to discuss it, we can, but...
So what we would be voting on is this ordinance, Page 537. We are removing Section 2 that deletes the Table 6 and replaces it with this information. So we are, we are not making any changes to Table 6.
Yes, ma'am, that is the motion on the table.
That's it, okay.
And then where is the section in here about the minimum and the maximum?
So that would be Section 1. It just says that where, it would be the ordinance is hereby amended by deleting subsections A and B.
And where are subsections A and B?
Right, that's the, the page 53.
Go to Page 540.
Any other questions? Okay, it's on the, she's reading it right now. Thank you.
But that's not that. This is by reference in the, in the ordinance, in the...
Before the mayor signs it, we'll make sure it's amended to reflect the, how it's voted on tonight.
Okay. Alright, all, any other discussion? Ready for the question?
Alright, I have a question. It sounds like this is adding clarification on definitions for townhomes, single-family residences, and ADUs, which seems like it would be a wise thing for us to do.
Where do you see that?
I'm looking at the red line version.
I'm looking at the chart.
Yeah, at the chart.
But there's not any changes to the chart.
Yeah, so on this one, we're just break, this chart broke out single-family residents to their own line item, broke out townhomes to their own item, added accessory dwelling unit to the chart. It's still in Section 4.13, so it's still in the code. That wouldn't change.
It's just clarity.
That's clarity.
And currently, right now, the way it's written is it's minimum of one space per dwelling unit, but it doesn't go into detail. That's what we're, if we only pass Section 1, and so the original ordinances before us actually added some additional definitions.
Right.
Granularity around it, which I think would make sense for...
I mean, I think we can live with, live without the definitions, because it doesn't really change the definition part we already passed. This, all it does is it moves townhome from one category to another, but if we're just sticking with existing law, I think it's, I think it's fine.
I don't think that's, that's not completely true, because it's, I think it's adding additional granularity. So right now, the current way it reads is minimum of one space per dwelling unit, and then it breaks, you know, the, the change to that, and that's for apartments, townhomes, condominiums, and other multifamily attachments. The change adds, you know, would change it to, you know, we can argue about, you know, if there's a better way of doing the numbers, but it, it breaks it down to point-eight-five spaces for a studio unit, point-nine for a single-bedroom unit, and then additional requirements depending on how many bedrooms you have.
I mean, I think that's all something we can deal with in the comp plan.
Okay.
The comp plan can decide if we need a more detailed breakdown.
Okay.
But it's very, just more clarification. Okay?
I'm gonna need a recap.
So you need a recap?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the recap is that we're looking at our K, which is J on the paper, just to make sure we're gonna start there, and that is to, to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, to amend the off-street parking sections, removing Section 2 or A and B.
Removing Section 2 from the resolution and leaving only Section 1.
Okay, so leaving only Section 1. So we're moving Section 2, only leaving Section 1. Is that clear for everybody? Is that clear? Okay, ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We'll get the vote here. Alright. All of, huh?
I didn't say a word.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two. All opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, motion didn't pass. Alright, we'll move to the next one.
Actually, I have a motion to reconsider the previous motion.
Which previous motion we gonna?
The one we just made.
Okay.
So I want to move on to the, I think we should resolve pieces of it. I just want to, you know, if I may explain the rationale behind it.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to add, I think I would like to add additional granularity to it. So I do agree with Councilman Carroll's point that we approved the A and B. I just want to make sure that, you know, personally, I prefer that we add some additional definitions to the parking and not just leave it ambiguous. That's my point of disagreement. So I would vote yes for the A and B for sure, to make sure that passes. I think that makes sense, but I would like to add additional details to that. So I'm happy to amend the motion to go back and consider the original thing that was before us and vote down, or change my vote to a yea on that, just to make sure that the A and B, that Section 1 passes, sorry, if I can be more clear with that.
Okay. So for, so right now, it did not pass. Councilman Perkins wants to reconsider the previous item, because you want to have some more definitions as it relates to the parking for, or how we define the parking for apartments?
Personally, I would like a version of it as is. If not, I would change my vote from a nay to a yea to pass the, I believe the A and B is important. Does that make sense? So my motion is to reconsider, so I need a second to reconsider it and go up for a vote.
A second, the motion to reconsider.
Can I interject for a second?
Yes.
Please.
So I believe the original, I mean, I believe the motion that was made was an amended motion to the item as listed on the agenda. So that doesn't, because the amended motion failed, that doesn't necessarily kill the main motion that is on the agenda. Technically, that's still something that the council could consider, or, so you could resume debate on the original motion, is what I'm saying, and you could, once debate is closed, you could offer another amendment, if that's what you're wanting to do, without necessarily doing a motion to reconsider the failed amend, vote on the amended motion, if that makes sense.
It does, but it doesn't, because when he made the motion, he made the motion to remove those sections, so... So he can, okay, so we'll go ahead. Yes.
May I comment?
Sure.
At this point, this is beyond comprehension.
Turn your mic on.
I would recommend that we defer this until we get something that people can put forward, and we can discuss it without all of these amendments, or we vote it down and start over with something that is very clear and very clean. Because going back now to reconsider a vote on something that's then, was already amended and then is going to have more amendments, and then, at that point, I'm, I, I just don't think that that serves us very well.
Okay.
It's really not that complicated. All we're doing is we're removing the maximum part. So you could make more parking this minimum, you can't make less than this minimum. It's very simple. We're saying you can add parking to the minimum on the other table. You can't decrease the parking to the minimum table. On the current version, you have to have exactly the parking on the table, but you can't add it, which is not logical, because you may need more parking for your home, you may need more parking for your business, you know, there's all sorts of situations where you might need more parking, and you wouldn't be allowed to under this table without a variance. So I don't understand what's so complicated about it.
Well, what's going to be complicated?
Well, Councilwoman Hood, calm it down. I know, I know, we, I know, we, we at the home stretch.
So it's like, you know, it's 9:47 at night, I know it's tired, it's hard to understand things, but it's really, it's just administrative fix, and I think everyone at P&amp;Z, even the people that disagreed with the other parts of it, agreed you should be allowed to add more parking if you want to. And that's all this is saying, is you can add more parking if you want to, and I'd be curious to hear the case against that. Like, just for people that voted against it, tell me why you think you shouldn't be allowed to add more parking.
Well, we not gonna put people like that on the spot. They want to say something, they want to say it. But, so right now, Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't want to give you that. You're like, you're like, I don't want that, right? Director Edwards, come on.
Staff would highly recommend at least removing Section A, because right now, what you have is parking maximums. I am fine if we want to hold off on changing the parking numbers and debate that later. That's completely fine. For example, right now, if somebody were to build a townhome, we would require a maximum of one parking space per townhome unit, and that's all they could have, end of story. Same goes for other uses, like for commercial uses. If they have that square footage, that's all they're limited to. They can't go any above. And I think what we've heard in this process is people are concerned that there's not enough parking in residential areas. So I would think that you all would support at least taking off A and B, and we can debate numbers later, if y'all are okay with that.
So, so with that, we have a motion to reconsider. It was seconded, so we're gonna go back and reconsider this item, which at the time the motion was to amend, to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 6, to amend the off-street parking requirements, and removing Sections A and B. Okay, so that's what's coming back.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I, I just want to double-check with the City Clerk. Was there a vote on the motion to reconsider, if that's what the council is?
There hasn't been yet.
There hasn't been a motion?
There's been a motion, yet there hasn't been a vote.
Yeah, so we have to vote to reconsider this, so are you ready for the question?
So who made the motion to reconsider?
I made the motion to reconsider. So that's some part of the prevailing vote.
And now we need to vote on that one. So thank you for the, to reconsider. So, thank you. So all in favor to reconsider the motion, I mean, the, the previous motion?
Ma, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Now, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what our attorney is asking us, well, what was the vote originally? Because everybody did not vote.
Okay.
Did they all vote?
They voted.
No. Do you have the vote? For the amendment, do you have a vote?
There's not a vote for the original.
Yeah, there is no vote for the original. This is just in the amendment.
Right.
Okay.
So this is just for the amendment. There hasn't been a vote in the original, because no one's made a motion to approve the original.
Okay, so we need to do the original.
Well, we need to vote on this motion reconsider, and then we can...
Go back to that, okay. So let's vote to reconsider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Okay, all those opposed, say nay. Well, that, we're just, okay. Okay, alright, so now we'll go back to the original.
Okay, so that passed, right?
Yeah, that passed.
What was the vote?
Four, six to zero.
Yeah, that passed.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's bad. So we have the original... So we have the original, do we need to go do the original, or do we need to do the amended and then do the original?
If I may, I believe the, because we're reconsidering, this goes back to the amended motion, right?
Yeah, I want you to say it, go ahead.
Please. Yes, that's correct. You're gonna reconsider the motion that was previously on the floor?
Mm-hmm.
Which was Councilman Carroll's amended motion to approve the ordinance, um, only containing the changes listed in section one, but removing the changes listed in section two.
Okay, all right, so we are going to go back to the amended motion to approve with the removal of A and B, which is section two, right? A and B. Okay, A and B, and he made a motion. So all in favor, say aye.
We brought it back.
Yeah, we brought it back to vote, because the motion to reconsider passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the motion to consider passed, so I was gonna amend it to include the table. I mean, it sounds like I don't get the, no, I'll keep the sample. Call the question.
Just call the question, we have two more things to get to.
So we already got that, so right now, we just got to come back to Councilman Carroll.
Only 607A and B, that's what the motion is.
607A and B.
Not, not any changes to the table.
That's right, what he wants, right there. Okay, all in favor of the amended motion?
You're gonna have to lay it out there.
Yes. Because I'm not voting on these numbers, I, I just, I need to see 607. This is the amended table, is that correct?
That is the amended table, and that will be struck from the ordinance based on the current motion.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is got an X on it.
Yes.
Yes.
So can you tell me, if you can remember, right now, in 607, how many parking spaces are required for a townhome? Because I'm, these points, nines and 1.26s.
The current ordinance says one space per town.
One per townhome. Is that one door or unit, two?
One dwelling.
One dwelling. One dwelling unit, one parking space.
Right. So it's the maximum and minimum.
So you can't build two under current law. You could not build two parking spots for a townhome, and all I'm doing is allowing you to build two parking spots for a townhome.
I get it, I get it.
Or three, if you want to. You could make it higher.
I get it, okay. I get it, but we've been here before, and I needed to know, I needed clarification, so I got it, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we have Councilman Carroll's motion amended. We sure, I hope we all sure, so we gonna stick with it, A and B.
Only, only A and B.
Only A and B. All right, so, so are we going to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, appendix A, Article 6, to amend the off-street parking requirements, removing A and B? Say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, say nay.
Somebody in both.
All those who are abstaining, any abstentions?
Some voted, yeah.
Abstentions? Abstention.
Do something.
Say, say something about it.
The problem is...
No, ma'am.
No, no, it's a...
Okay, you know...
It's a vote. Yes, yes, no, or abstention.
Okay, all right. Since yes.
There's a problem with the motion. It says to reduce parking, and we're not reducing parking.
Where did you get that from?
No, it just says, it just, the, the motion says amend the off-street parking requirement.
Right, it doesn't say reduce.
It doesn't say reduce, it says amend.
It doesn't say reduce, so it passed.
It passed, yeah.
So I'm gonna come back to this, so I'm gonna...
Reducing requirements for certain dwelling types, and we're not doing that, are we?
No, it says amend.
No, that's not, that was never the motion, we never said that motion.
We said amend.
We said, we never said that. We never said that, okay, so...
It's passed, it's law.
In terms of, now do we need to redo the whole motion, are we good?
No.
She's not just blowing it.
Right, so we're not to reduce, and so let me ask for clarity, because in the ordinance, it has reduce, so we need to take that section, piece out of the top part, if you look at it.
I gotta, I gotta say, she can only remove the reduce section of it after the amendment has passed. So yes, it currently says that in the document before us, but based off of Councilmember Carroll's amendment, we are adding, allowing the increase of parking spots, not the reduction of parking spots, and once the vote is final, I'm sure they'll go and amend it. Is that correct, city attorney?
We can clarify the text to accurately reflect the motion taken.
Thank you, okay, that's, that's fine. So now, we're gonna say the whole thing again, so we approve section A and B, I thought we were okay with it.
Well, I think we've already voted for it.
We voted.
Yeah, we can, we can move on.
We're good, okay, I just want to make sure.
We're passed, we're done.
Okay, we're good, thank God.
Full time in the meeting, can we get that out?
Okay, so the next piece is to consider a resolution requesting that a sound barrier be erected along the eastern right-of-way of the intersection 285, Councilman Carroll.
Yes, so we, I did a resolution on this a few years ago, as I think some of the people have spoken on before, spoken on now. It's a serious problem that along 285, the noise really bothers the residents of Clarkston that are closest to 285. There's a sound barrier on the other side of the highway, not on our side, and when I did this resolution a few years ago, and it was brought to Hank Johnson's office, they told us, come back when they're expanding the lanes. Well, now they're expanding the lanes at 285, so now, I think it's our time to come back, when the noise, if anything, is only gonna get worse when they expand the lanes, and the sound barrier will hopefully be helpful to reduce the noise for some of our residents. It also has a pollution benefit, because the particles that come out from the cars, at least some of them will be absorbed by the sound barrier, as opposed to spreading out further into the near, the nearby neighbors. So that's for the purpose, this resolution is just to encourage that sound barrier to be constructed along 285, when the lane expansion happens.
Okay, so I'll take a motion?
I have a motion.
Yeah, he just did an introduction.
I said introduction, there hasn't been a motion yet, but somebody else wants to do a motion, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so there's a, go ahead, Councilwoman Hood.
I move, I move to consider a resolution requesting that a sound barrier be erected along the eastern right-of-way of Interstate 285.
Is there a second?
To approve it.
A second.
To approve it, yes.
Shall I repeat that?
Repeat it.
I move to approve a resolution requesting that a sound barrier be erected along the eastern right-of-way of Interstate 285.
Okay, who's been second?
Second.
Okay, is there ever properly moved and seconded to approve a resolution requesting that a sound barrier be erected along the eastern right-of-way of intersection 285? Is there any more discussion on this? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion pass. And finally, to consider amending the Parks Master Plan to include consideration of the Clarkston Lake area, and that was Councilman Carroll as well.
Yes, so the, we're near the end of the Parks Master Plan, and so, the residents along Mylum Lake have long asked for inclusion into this process, we've heard from a lot of them throughout the process, and so all this is, is adding that area to the Parks Master Plan, to allow for some feedback from the residents through a formal mechanism of the Parks Master Plan during the last month. And so I think it's not saying, you know, what exactly we will do with Mylum Lake, but at least it gives us more information to make the decision in the future, if the city wants to, you know, make some changes and make some improvements to the Mylum Lake area, at least we can hear what the residents want, which I think can only improve the decision-making in the future. And I'll defer to the city manager, who I think has done some work on this item as well.
Yes, I'll defer.
No, you can go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you. I know you're ready to go, but listen, wait a minute, okay, all right, sit in there.
Yes, ma'am. I do have an opportunity to speak with Carlos Perez of the Perez Group, who is managing consultation of the Parks Master Plan, along with Director Duncan, and so there is opportunity for Perez to set up engagement sessions with the residents of the lake and pond area. There is, it will not constitute a, a delay in the Parks Master Plan, and it will not constitute an increase in cost to the, to the plan either. And so what we're going to do is set up meetings with the residents, do a survey strategy, use survey strategy during the meeting, and the meeting will be twofold. One, to gather information about the Parks Master Plan overall, which is what we intended to do with the plan itself, and the second is to get information from those residents about any potential, their desire for any potential collaboration with the city, to, to program the lake, to maintain the lake, or to access the lake at any point. So I do think that this information will be beneficial to this conversation, and it will be included in the plan document as the administration, the Parks Director, and the council CFO.
Okay, thank you.